This is the Mic Check 12.
Gloria Gonzalez De Lequia.
Here.
Anna Smith.
Here.
Christine Maur.
Here.
Trish Bodie.
Here.
Shadé Fashakoun.
Here.
Francesca Romans.
Here.
Paul Gautier.
Here.
Thank you Cindy, it is 6:15 PM and with the quorum of the board present, I call this meeting of the Leander ISD Board of Trustees to order. We're gonna start with our Pledge of Allegiance and it is my pleasure to welcome Cadet Ashlyn Hoke of the Lone Star Company Navy Junior ROTC at Vista Ridge High School to lead the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge. Cadet Hoke, a ninth grade student at Vista Ridge High School, is the daughter of Vanessa and Brandon and an active member of the Lone Star Company's Varsity Unarmed Drill Team. Cadet Hoke takes pride in serving the community as a volunteer at Veterans Memorial Park and a local Adopt-A-Road cleanup. Cadet Hoke is also a supply assistant who is responsible for $100,000 worth of uniform and government supplies. Her commitment to service, sharp appearance, and exemplary conduct earned her the designation of Cadet of the Month for October 2023. Cadet Hoke's performance and dedication were a vital part of the Lone Star Company's success, which resulted in her unit being ranked number one in the state of Texas. Go Rangers! Her actions reflect most favorably on the Lone Star Company Navy Junior ROTC, her school, and Leander ISD. Well done Cadet Hoke. Thank you.
Please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the Texas Pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're gonna move to our spotlight on learning and hear about some of the amazing things happening at Wiley Middle School. Come on down.
All right. Madam President and esteemed Board of Trustees, thank you for welcoming us tonight and spotlighting empowered student learning at Wiley Middle School. I'm thrilled to have the opportunity to share some of the wonderful things that are happening at Wiley. Empowered student learning is not just words that are in the LISD strategic plan, but a philosophy that helps guide our decisions to create valuable learning opportunities for students both inside and outside of the classrooms. Empowered student learning is about providing students with the tools and opportunities they need to take ownership of their education. At Wiley, we encourage students to become active participants in their learning journey rather than passive recipients of information. When students feel empowered, they are more engaged, motivated, and confident in their abilities. To foster empowered student learning, we have created a learning environment that values student voice and choice. This means giving students agency in what and how they learn and encouraging them to ask questions, pursue their interests, and explore their passions. Tonight, we will highlight two different opportunities that students have to empower their learning at Wiley. Our first opportunity we will discuss is found within the walls of a classroom called Mixed Ink. It's an entrepreneurship class. Another opportunity that students have to grow as learners and leaders is being part of our National Junior Honor Society. Let's hear about these experiences from our panel. We'll start with the Mixed Ink teacher, Ms. Bam. And...
Yes ma'am. Thank you, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. My name is Cheryl Bam. I am the teacher for Mixed Ink, which is an entrepreneurship class. But our students don't just learn about the name entrepreneurship, they actually become entrepreneurs. And they are empowered with agency to chart their own course in this class, from designing a business model around a problem that actually matters to them and their friends with the goal of launching an actual business. Our LISD graduate profile describes what we want for our students at Wiley and in Leander, and I can say without a doubt that Mixed Ink does help our students become the contributing community members that our community and school district want and need for them to be, as well as future employers. So through Mixed Ink, our students develop skills such as critical and creative thinking, and they work to see problems around their life, in their life, in their friends' lives, in their families' lives. And they brainstorm solutions, they get to iterate those solutions, they fail forward, and so they are learning so much in this class about that critical thinking. They become skilled communicators and collaborators. They have to work in teams all year long, middle schoolers. So they are definitely learning how to engage one another, how to work through issues that come with working in a team and being able to work on their communication skills. They also become compassionate community contributors because they are identifying within our building problems that they want to solve. And you know, some of these problems happen at home too. They are adaptable and reflective. They spend the last portion of the year reflecting on their success or failure of their business. Not all of the businesses succeed, and so they are learning through that process as well. But, don't take my word for it. I do want to just share with you a few things. I can sit here and say all of these words to you and tell you all of the wonderful things that they do, and it's just on paper, right? This was a solution for the problem of tangled wire earbuds. It came out of COVID, y'all. They were learning at home and they were struggling with having their earbuds, the wires messed just everywhere. And so I had a team that wanted to solve that problem. They learned a 3D model, they designed this themselves, they iterated probably 15 times, so this is the final solution. It looked very different to begin with. Then we have some that are just pretty simple. They had too many crayons and stinky rooms. So they came up with a candle where they melted down crayons and added essential oils. Pencils, if you've ever seen a middle school classroom, pencils all over the floor. This was to solve that problem, they can put it around their book binder. Scrapers, board boards, if y'all know what a tech deck is, it has the wheels on it. Not a quiet fidget for the classroom. So our students solved that with this board board, 3D designed. And I obviously could go on and on about this class, but I am going to pass it on to one of my students who can tell you a lot more of what he's learning and doing.
Thank you. Yes, we'll hear from Cash Perez next. He's been a student in Ms. Bam's class for two years.
Hello, I am Cash Perez and I am a student at Wiley Middle School. Wiley Middle School has played a huge role in shaping who I am today, both inside and outside the classroom. It's been more than textbooks and lessons, it's been about growing as a person. I used to be pretty shy, and school has given me the chance to break out of my shell and connect with others in meaningful ways. In my entrepreneurship class, I've learned to stand tall and speak my mind, just like I'm doing right now. It's been a real confidence booster, seeing others come in and share what they've learned, including the challenges they faced. It's been a real eye-opener for our class. It shows us that it's okay to make mistakes, just as long as we learn from them and keep moving forward. Being a part of a band has been another game changer for me, not just about making music, but it's being a part of a team and believing in ourselves. The support we give each other is incredible. It's shown me that with determination and hard work, we can achieve anything. Wiley Middle School is a special place. The teachers here really care about us and work hard to help us learn in the best way possible. The whole school community is like a big family, always there to cheer us on. So as we move forward, let's remember that what we're learning here is a foundation for a future filled with courage, resilience, and endless opportunities. We've got a bright journey ahead of us, and I'm excited to see where it takes us.
Thank you Cash. Good job. Finally, we're gonna hear from Mr. Hansony Watt, who's a business owner and a parent in our community who volunteers once a week to mentor students in this Mixed Ink class.
Thank you Ms. Smith. As you said, I'm a father of three kids in the district, all at different levels, high school, middle school, elementary school. I actually got involved with Mixed Ink because they heard that I was actually involved with Incubator. It's another program that we have at the high school level, and I've been doing incubator mentorship since the beginning. I think it's been like six or eight years, something like that. And you know, at Incubator, we help the kids build an actual business. So when I found out about Wiley, where my kids go, having a middle school version of it, I jumped at the opportunity to be able to mentor these kids. So my role when I come in is I meet with them once a week, I meet with every team, and I'm giving them sort of real world input. You know, this is what it's really like to be an entrepreneur, here's what we really do solve. But I also just give them another avenue, another place to get their ideas across, another person to give input back. What's important for me though, is that it's never my idea that I give to them, it's never me telling them what to do, it's them being able to bounce their ideas off of somebody else who's been there and done that. And I like to kind of give anecdotal stories of this. I always tell the kids, you know, your ideas are gonna be more important than what I tell you because your market and your audience who you're selling to may not be me. We've had a team last year that, when I heard their idea, I'm like, that's ridiculous, that's never gonna sell. But I'm not their target audience. They were making accessories that you put onto Crocs. I don't wear Crocs, I know nothing about it, and I thought for sure that that's not gonna sell, but hey, let's move forward, let's test it out, let's ask around, ask your fellow students, and they sold out first day. Like that sold like crazy because that was their target audience, they understood that. It's also, what's important is seeing students that maybe wouldn't have an opportunity to find their place, find their place. We've had students that maybe are quiet, shy. What's really important with Mixed Ink is we give people roles, you know, here's your part of this team, and here's your role in there. And so we've had some that are very shy that come in and they're just amazing salespeople. We had a team last year that, same thing, I was like, nobody's gonna buy this, nobody's gonna buy this. She went out and she sold it like crazy, and she actually won an award. We like to give them awards at the end of the year. She won an award at the end of the year, and I thought for sure the product was gonna be a failure from day one. So it's just been amazing for me as a community member to also be a part of this, but to see the kids grow from the day I meet them and we're identifying what their skills and what their strengths are, to at the end, they're up there presenting, they're selling product, they're out there being business people, being entrepreneurs, but also being team members that are working with each other to create a product that is important to them, and they're self-motivated to make this happen. So it's been really good for me as well.
Thank you. Empowered student learning also equips students with the skills they need to succeed not only in the classroom but in life beyond the classroom. At Wiley, we also feel that it is important to provide opportunities for students to learn inside and outside the school building. We have several opportunities for students to give back to their school and their local communities through organizations on campus. Our National Junior Honor Society is one of our largest and most active organizations on campus. So students in NJHS seek opportunities to volunteer, their time to enhance the Wiley school experience as well as giving back to their community. So next, I want to welcome NJHS student Ainsley Jones and the sponsor Danny Beaver. They will share how students in this organization gain skills such as self-motivation, time management, accountability, and teamwork, which are all valuable skills today and in the future. First, we're gonna hear from Ainsley.
Hi, I'm Ainsley Jones and I'm an eighth grader at Wiley Middle School. I'm involved in NJHS Yearbook Spanish and Athletics. Out of all these subjects, I wanna focus on NJHS. NJHS helps me develop a knowledge and skills to be a well-rounded student and leader in my community. As an NJHS member, you are always expected to follow the golden rule, always do the right thing when no one's watching. Many students look over the golden rule and say that they're not gonna ever use it outside of school. And they end up doing. When people think of NJHS, their mind goes straight to academics. Are you a straight A student? Many people ask. Yet they look right over citizenship, a big pillar of NJHS. I believe that NJHS will help me prepare for my future because the high standards we are held to. NJHS also helps me with time management. First of all, we have to have a minimum of 12 service hours per semester. I know that I had to figure out how to get most of it done during the summer because I'm in sports. It has ultimately taught me how to be proactive and get things done. To add on, NJHS has helped me be accountable. For example, I have to make sure that I'm studying and working hard to get good grades on my assignments because if my average of my four classes drops below a 90%, there could be consequences. This will help me in any of my future jobs so I can make sure I meet my quotas and more. Most of all, during service opportunities, I have to make sure I'm on my best behavior, especially when I'm doing service opportunities around little kids. I wanna make sure that I am a leader and responsible. I know that this will help me in the future, just in case I'm ever around someone who is younger than me and looks up to me. Whatever I decide to do in life, or just in high school, I know I will be prepared. Thank you for your attention today and I hope you have a good rest of your day or night.
Mr. Beaver's gonna share how he believes the National Junior Honor Society overall enhances the Wiley experience.
So my name is Danny Beaver and I am the Wiley Middle School NJHS advisor. And through NJHS at Wiley, students are given the opportunity to be leaders in their homes, their school, and their community. NJHS emphasizes the importance of community service and leadership and promotes the development of positive character traits such as integrity, respect, responsibility, and citizenship. Being part of NJHS at Wiley encourages students to collaborate with their peers who share similar academic standards, and it allows students to build those relationships which might be valuable to them in their future endeavors. It requires students to balance their academic commitments with service and leadership responsibilities in addition to their rigorous co-curricular schedules, which is important for success both in and out of the school. Participating in NJHS is a notable achievement which even affords members the opportunity to apply for a National Outstanding Achievement Award, which is a scholarship given annually for members specifically in NJHS. So involvement in NJHS contributes to their personal growth by encouraging students to step out of their comfort zones, taking on leadership roles, making a positive contribution in their communities, which ultimately leads to increased self-confidence and self-accomplishment.
Thank you, Mr. Beaver. I also want you to share a little bit about some of your upcoming community service projects that your group has.
So there are two main projects that we do in the fall. One we're currently doing which helps with a local community center called Reveal Resource Center, and we are helping to feed up to 500 families for the Thanksgiving holiday. We do this through donations. It's actually a school-wide endeavor that we're working through right now. And you know, we have a little fun with it. If we meet our goals, then the grade level AP will have their choice of getting slimed or taped to a wall, or you know, something fun. If we meet our school goal, then our wonderful principal has also offered to have one of these fun, fun things done, yeah.
Bonus activities, yes.
So if anyone wants to donate, there are lists available. Right now, eighth grade is in the lead. And then another big one that we will be doing just within our NJHS organization is over the last few years, we've worked with the LISD Backpack Program, and we'll be helping to feed families over the winter break. And our biggest focus is our local impact, so we have several families from Wiley and our feeder pattern, so Rouse, down to Pleasant Hill and Block House, that we collect donations for and build boxes so that their families can eat over the winter break.
Thank you. I wanna thank all the panel members for joining me up here today to share some of the ways that we empower the students at Wiley. When we prioritize empowered student learning, we're not just enhancing their academic experience, we're preparing them for a brighter future. I urge the school board to continue supporting initiatives like Mixed Ink and things like that to promote student empowerment as they are the key to unlocking the full potential of our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you for being here. We appreciate our staff, our students, and our community members, so thank you. I think Daniel wants us to take a quick photo. Now we'll move to the citizen comments portion of our agenda. Oh, no, I skipped something. The very, that's a very fun thing too, that I know we're excited to see. Next, we're gonna watch a video recognizing some of our incredible LISD staff.
Hello LISD, my name is Kellin.
And I'm Mason, and I hope you're having a great school year so far.
We want to start off by showing our appreciation to our empowered staff in a couple of departments that help keep LISD running.
Here to do that, we have Assistant Superintendent of Special Programs and Services Campbell Walton with a special message for School Psychologist Appreciation Week.
Happy National School Psychology Week. We have to take a moment to give a huge heartfelt shout-out to all of our school psychologists that are serving on each and every campus in Leander ISD. We have the absolute best school psychologists around. This year's theme for School Psychology Week is "Let's Grow Together." And when I think about our school psychologists, they do just that. They partner with parents, and families, and the community, school staff, teachers, principals, everybody to make sure that our students have the tools that they need to be successful and independent and learn and grow in Leander ISD. Thank you for all that you do, you are incredible. Thank you for ensuring that each and every student gets the services that they need through the evaluation process, through counseling, and all of the inclusion that you provide for our students. Celebrate big, and thank you for all you do.
This week, we are also celebrating Maintenance Appreciation Week. Here's Facilities Director Joey Gardner sharing his thoughts of appreciation.
Hi, I'm Joey Gardner, I'm the Director of Facilities for the District. With this week being Maintenance Appreciation Week, I thought I'd explain a little bit about what our department does and the people within our department. Anything that involves maintenance, upkeep, general repairs, the stuff that we're doing in our department. Not only that, but it's all of the mowing, keeping up all of the maintenance of the football fields and athletic environments. And to do that, it takes a lot of people pitching in all at the same time, and a lot of those are, can be anywhere from a facility planner, to our special projects person, to our grounds people, to my general techs and our HVAC techs, including all of the controls people that pitch in to help us with everything that we need, all of my office staff of course, and leads and supervisors, my parts people, all of these people kick in, everything they can under all the circumstances. It's been a tough year. We've had freezes and internal floods and extraordinary hot summers that challenged us, and I'm really proud to be part of a group of people who stood up to those challenges and in my opinion, were very successful. I appreciate every single one of you, and there's no way we can do this without every single one of you. I hope y'all have a great week.
Now we all know there are a ton of smart students across the school district. Now the whole country will know that too.
Out of the thousands of hashtag #1 LISD juniors who took the PSAT last year, 33 of them have earned recognition as semifinalists for the National Moret Scholarship based on... on SAT or ACT scores, Outstanding Academic Record, Staff Recommendation, and a written essay. These students will be considered for their designation as National Laureate Scholars.
There are more than seven thousand scholarships offered this year. That adds up to twenty-eight million dollars in scholarship money. Winners will be announced next year. We're hoping for the best of those who are well-deserving students.
Beyond academic success, Leander ISD has attained the highest marks for the district's financial management and accountability.
LISD recently earned a Superior Achievement from the Financial Integrity Rating of Texas, also known as First for the 2022-2023 School Year. Based on twenty financial indicators, the district showed the strength, quality, and accountability for their financial management practices.
Wow, LISD, we are just sensational. We're offering a wealth of gratitude to the students, teachers, and staff and parents who helped make these accomplishments possible.
And always remember, there's no place like LISD.
So cute, so many things to celebrate. Next, we're going to move to our citizen comments portion of the agenda, but before I invite the first speakers to the podium, we'll watch a short video.
Hello, my name is Kellin.
And my name is Mason.
We're both fifth graders at Steiner Ranch Elementary. The district and the Board of Trustees are the local government body responsible for serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren, like me and my friends here in Leander Independent School District. Their mission is to cultivate each individual student while creating a safe and supportive environment. The Board is now taking up the citizen's comment agenda item. This is dedicated time during this meeting to hear from the whole community and the entire LISD family. The district believes the Leander family thrives when we ensure a welcoming, safe, and caring environment.
To our speakers, before you speak, we hope you have read guidelines and specified in Board Operating Procedures and BED Local. The Board wants to hear from everyone. Please be mindful of your conduct and the example you are choosing to set when presenting complex information. Remember that schoolchildren of all ages participate in Board meetings, either by watching them online, or you might even see some of us in the audience. Still remember that there are other ways you can communicate with the Board. You can send them an email, come to the Board Cafe, or just tell them that you would like to chat sometime. When the Board President calls your number, remember, watch the timer and focus on your remarks to the time allotted. We know it can be hard, but please, conclude your comments when you hear the chime.
So professional. Okay, we're going to start with speaker number one. I do not see speaker number one. Okay, we're going to move over to speaker number two. You're going to go to that podium, right there. Thank you.
All right, good evening. My name is Tammy Guthrie. I taught for twenty-three years and retired from being a PE teacher this past May from the Best Elementary in Leander, River Ridge. River Ridge has produced many bright and talented students during the years I was there, but there is one student who stood out. His name was Graylin Spring. Graylin was an exceptionally gifted athlete, even as an elementary-age boy. But what I loved most about Graylin was his character. When Graylin played Capture the Flag, or any other game, I couldn't ever tell if he was on the winning team or the losing team, because he had such a great attitude. He played hard, he had fun, and he showed great sportsmanship whenever he was in PE. For someone so athletically skilled, he was very humble. He didn't have to tell people how good he was. That was evident to all. Most of us probably realize just how unusual this is for a fifth-grade boy to be so humble. Graylin was also very kind, goofy, and well-liked. He was a friend to all, and everyone wanted to be his friend. So it was no surprise to see the large number of people at his funeral in February. Yes, unfortunately, Graylin lost his life in a tragic car accident. He was a freshman at Stephen F. Austin University and played football for them. Our community has felt his loss very deeply ever since. Before I retired, I thought it would be fitting to honor Graylin. My principal, Shelley Roberts, agreed. We decided to award one fifth-grade boy and one fifth-grade girl the Live Like Gray Award. The selection committee considered many qualities when choosing the recipients of this award that is to be given out every year. In addition to athletic ability, students should exhibit qualities such as humility, kindness, and sportsmanship.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you start wrapping up your comments? It's at one-thirty, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, why do I tell you all this? Well, the word is out, there is a new elementary in the works, and the high school that River Ridge students feed into is named Lieutenant Matthew Ryan Vandergriff, who is a student in Leander and unfortunately was killed in Iraq. When his name was selected, the thought behind it was the hope of seeing other LISD students demonstrate Matthew's characteristics. I believe Graylin lived up to this. Wouldn't it be fitting to select Graylin Paul Spring as the name of the next elementary? Thank you for your time, consideration, and don't forget to live like gray.
Thank you. Speaker number three.
Good evening, Dr. Gearing, Madam President, esteemed Board Trustees. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Wesley Alsop. I'm here to provide further color commentary to my original nomination of Beverly Alsop and the naming of School ES30. I'd like to expand a bit tonight on her selflessness and courageous virtues. Rewind the clock about twenty years ago, before one of the most important diversification movements of our time, women and technology. Beverly was a trailblazer, unintentionally and without even realizing it. Courageously, she stepped out of the traditional classroom, one of her deep loves, and accepted an ask from the district to take on a newly created role of Campus Tech Facilitator, even though outside of her comfort zone, Beverly realized the impact that this would have on a broad group of students in a new and unknown environment. It was going to be exciting, and yet scary at the same time. Because of her courageous and selfless approach, she was able to have a lasting impact for years to come, introducing children, so many children, to technology, and helping to shape the tech facilitator role for years to come as well. If Beverly's namesake is honored with ES30's naming process, I believe that my mom's works will impact students and young women for generations to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Speaker Three. Next, Speaker Number Four.
Hello. My name is Candace Creighton-Andrea Uchi. Please forgive my nerves. I'm a teacher, so speaking in front of, like, adults is not for me. But I'm here to give you guys a short description of why the next elementary school should be named after my amazing mother. My mom, Lori Marie Creighton, started teaching school in nineteen eighty-two. She taught in several districts, including Round Rock and Georgetown, but most importantly, Leander. She was always my human calendar, so without her here, I'm not quite sure that I have the dates right, but pretty sure she moved from Georgetown ISD's Behavior Program to Leander's when Stu Taylor hired her at Vista Ridge as the Behavior Teacher in two thousand and six, yeah. So, having been raised by teachers, I always wanted to be in education when I grew up. I followed in my mom's footsteps. I taught for Leander ISD, Cedar Park High School, I cap for twelve years. We moved because of my husband's job, came back as fast as we could. Now we're back, so, but anyway, she, my mom volunteered her time every homecoming, prom, graduation, anything, everything that she could do. And she is the reason that most of her kids graduated. Like, there would be lots of kids that did not walk the stage if not for her. She did Homebound, taught at Sylvan, did all that, so, anyway, yes. Lori Marie Creighton, thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number Four. Next, we're going, that was Speaker Number Five. Next, we will, no, that was Speaker Four. I saw the same last name, sorry, threw me off. Next, Speaker Number Five.
Hello, my name is Rich Andrew Uchi. I'm Candace's husband and Lori's son-in-law, so a whole lot of what she said, but also I never put a whole lot of thought into how schools were named. This is kind of new to me, but also having spent nineteen years in municipal government, I'm going to make this short and get at, so you guys can get on with these meetings. I know you all want to go home. So, a whole lot of what she said. Lori taught for seventeen years at Vista Ridge High School. When you talk about somebody that ensured that no student fell through the cracks, that was Lori Creighton. So the amount of time she would be bringing food to kids, or making sure they had clothes, or inviting some, their and their families to the house for the holidays, because she knew they weren't going to eat if they didn't do that, or asking us if she could have some of my son's old games to bring to the classroom, or to these kids' houses, I mean, it goes on and on. So she volunteered for every extracurricular activity that Vista Ridge had, sang the National Anthem at the basketball games, so many of you guys would have seen her singing there, and kept in contact with so many of the students that were blessed to have her as a teacher even after graduation. There were quite a few of them at her funeral. So, I don't know what the process is, if you guys draw a name out of a hat, or that most people come up here and talk, whatever that is, but I truly appreciate getting the time up here to speak about Lori. You know, she was my mother-in-law, and you know, there's not always, not always the best relationship there between son-in-law and mother-in-law, but by God, here I am singing her praises, so, thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Speaker Number Five. Next is Speaker Number Six.
Good evening, Board Members. My name is Gerald Prater, and I am a longtime parent and community member here in Leander ISD, and I'm here tonight to express some concerns or grievances with my government about my representation. My concern specifically is with the way that I have seen the member of this Board, Trustee Gautier, treated by this Board, and I just want to remind you that he was elected to represent many of us, and we do not, we do not feel that the overall treatment that our representative is getting is showing respect to those of us who elected him. Tomorrow, many people, many schools in our district are going to celebrate Veterans Day. I am a veteran, gave a career, served in this country, fighting for the rights of people who often didn't agree with me, but I fought for them anyway. That's what you were elected to do. You were elected to represent all of us, not just the people who agree with you. Remember your oath. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number Six. Next, Speaker Number Seven.
All right, looks like that's on tonight. Good evening, I'm Jennifer Craven. I am here tonight to speak with you as a psychologist, as a parent, and hopefully to both share some of my experience and to even educate you. I know that all of us, at least every week, open up something on the website, that there's a Terms and Conditions that you don't read, and you click yes, because it's non-negotiable in order to continue on that website. There was a Leander staff member this week who told me that it's ultimately the student's responsibility, and I actually disagree with that. I think, as these students are minors, that it's ultimately our responsibility as adults to see where the ball is dropped, and to help them, and to teach them, so that they can learn to take care of themselves. If there's a child who has a disability, do the same Terms and Conditions apply? Do you know that our high school campus dual credit coordinator doesn't coordinate with the special needs staff coordinator? And do you see any problem with that? Our staff doesn't understand neurodiversity, that everyone isn't the same, even if they look like one another. It's a type of prejudice, and it's a problem at our high school. If you don't look like you have a disability, then you're treated as a discipline problem, and treating everyone as a discipline problem is archaic. It takes another four to five years for kids who have ADHD to develop and to catch up to typical development that other kids have, and we need to help them during that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number Seven. Speaker Number Eight? No, Speaker Number Eight. Speaker Number Nine?
Good evening, my name is James Dean. I may get a little, I saw something in the news that has made me very angry. We elected all of you, and you work for the public school system. That's what you work for. And in America, public schools plays a vital, incredible role. You cannot have a democracy without good education. We're not going to be able to save public schools by giving out vouchers for somebody to take money out of public schools so that they can go to private schools. That's never going to work. Private schools can always increase their tuition, they can always take the money and run, they can throw out people like myself that may be gay, or trans, or lesbian, or whatever, or may have special needs. They don't have to do anything for us. The other thing that upsets me about this is we wait for one trustee person to get himself organized and prepared for these meetings, still not doing that, all this time later, but can waste time going down to the Capitol asking for money to be spent for private school vouchers. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number Nine. All right, thank you, citizen comments. Next, we're going to move over to the consent agenda. Board Members, do I have any motions related to the consent agenda?
I make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
Trish made the motion, Anna second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven in favor, and opposed, motion passes. Next, our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Isn't it great that we are back in person, everybody together in the same space? This is the competition gym at Vista Ridge High School, where we held the opening sessions of our thirtieth annual Continuous Improvement Conference. So let's talk a little bit about that. There truly is no place like LISD. There are not very many districts in the state that put on their own professional development conferences, and certainly not many that have more than ninety percent of the sessions presented in that conference presented by our very own staff, where they're sharing their own ideas and helping each other out. We had some great keynote addresses from some invited guests. This is Damon West, told his story to our staff, but as I said, over three hundred and eighty-six sessions, we had seven national speakers on Tuesday aligned to the strategic plan, and to the district improvement plan, and campus improvement plans, three hundred and seventy-five different speakers over the two days, and as I said, over ninety percent of those were our internal staff in sessions that are peer-to-peer learning. And more than just learning sessions, we also had food trucks, a wellness room, a benefits expo, and lots of other kinds of activities. If you want to see more, you can- If you want to see more, you can, of course, go to X and see all kinds of great things that happened in our conference. I want to talk about our empowered learners a little bit. You heard some great stories out of Wiley Middle School. We want to share a little disclaimer to say that I'll share some of these things with you, but there's so many great things happening in LISD that I'm sure I'm missing some very important things that are going on that I just don't necessarily know to highlight at this point. So, I apologize to everybody out there that I'm not highlighting, but I do want to share some of the great things that are going on. Of course, the fall is cross-country season, and so we had our state cross-country meets a couple of weekends ago, and our kids did absolutely phenomenal. We had our Vista, Vandergrift High School girls finished eighth at state as a team, and our Vandergrift High School boys team finished second. And that included then a second-place individual. It is a little confusing because they run both as a team and as individuals in the state cross-country meet. On the girl's side, we also had a lot of success. And you can see that at the five A state cross-country meet, we had a second-place girls finish for the Cedar Park High School Timberwolves. And Isabel has been consistently placing at the state cross-country meet since her freshman year. And so, another incredible finish for her. Of course, a very successful couple of weeks down in San Antonio at the Alamodome. At the six A state marching band competition, we had a fifth place by Vista Ridge High School, which was an incredible result for them. And then, of course, our six A state championship Vandergrift High School marching band, incredible performance by them Tuesday, the thirty-first of October on Halloween. The following week, our Cedar Park High School put on perhaps the most incredible marching band performance I've seen in a long time. I will tell you that I was secretly holding out that Rouse was going to win, but they couldn't, couldn't compete with Cedar Park on that day. Just really absolutely incredible performance by Cedar Park High School. Second place from Rouse High School and a fifth place finish by Leander High School. Just an incredible set of performances by our kids, leaving us with two state championships at marching band in two weeks' time. Cedar Park-Rouse competition continued on the volleyball court as volleyball playoffs are going on. In this case, Rouse did come out on top, and so they are moving on to the next round of the volleyball competition. That will be the regional round, the regional tournament. Talk a little bit about safe and innovative learning environments. We've heard a little bit about elementary school number thirty. So, I wanted to just show you a few quick pictures of the really fun process of standing up tilt wall. So, that building is now vertical. They pour all the concrete for the tilt wall on site and form those walls. And then, they have the big crane that picks up those walls and starts to put them into place. And we now have what looks like a school on that site out near Glenn High School. And then, this is just a really feel-good story and for me is part of the reason that I love being part of the Leander ISD community. We had Chief of Police, Chief Minton, his Assistant Chief Fletcher and Lieutenant Mitchell, Detective Villarreal and Animal Control Officers Cameron Davis and Alexandria come out and serve Thanksgiving lunch for some of our staff. And just what an incredible testament to how it takes a village, not just to raise a child, but also to support the people who are raising those children. And so, I want to give a huge shout-out to Leander PD for coming out and supporting our staff. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? No, that was a busy few weeks of like champions, champions, champions. So, go LISD, right? That was really, it was exciting. So, next, we're going to move into our agenda, but we are going to move some items. Since we have some guest presenters with us this evening, we're going to begin with agenda item seven, C2, consider approval of the 2022-23 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Good evening, Madam President. Let's try that again. Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Gearing. Tonight, we have on our, our agenda is to accept the annual financial report or comprehensive annual financial report for the 2022-2023 school year. Tonight, we have Selena Sotoceras with Whitley Penn. She's an audit partner, and she's here to give a presentation and answer any questions you may have and details about, about the financial audit.
Thank you, Mr. Papi. Madam President, Dr. Gearing and members of the board, thank you for having us here tonight. And as the slides come up, we'll go through the audit, the opinion, the internal controls and some financial highlights as well. All right. So, the purpose of the audit, and we won't have a spoiler alert. I won't tell you what you've earned, but you know, our, our purpose is yet. The purpose of the audit is to issue an opinion on the financial statements. And first of all, we want to thank your, your staff, Mr. Papi and Dana Paulson for all of their hard work and all of their team all year round, not just in the fall. It's a very, very daunting task to get through an audit on top of their, their regular duties. And so, the disclaimer is the worst type of opinion. That means that the records are in such bad shape, we can't issue an opinion. A qualification indicates that the, the numbers can be relied on, but there are some exceptions. And then, finally, the unmodified opinion is that clean opinion where any user can rely on the financial statements. The process started in March, April of this year, gaining an understanding of what's changed at the district, whether it involves financial reporting or federal programs. And then, we came in and assessed internal controls, identified the key controls, tested those key controls. After the district closed its books as of June 30th, 2023, we came back in September, October timeframe and did our substantive testing, which I'll get into here in a bit, all in an effort to issue our opinion. The internal controls that we focus on are payroll, non-payroll procurement, IT, any federal-specific test, other revenues and even PMS and average daily attendance, knowing that that drives your, your state aid. We do do a lot of payroll testing just because it makes up the majority of your expenditure. So, we spend a lot of time there, both on federal and general payroll as well. The substantive procedures include analytic procedures, which are fine. That's a starting point. We look at a flux analysis, ratio analysis. We also do predictive testing. But then, we get into vouching. And finally, the last two rectangles there provide the most evidence, audit evidence through confirmations and then third-party reports, the TEA payment report, the comptroller's payment report and the payment ledgers as well. We do confirm your property taxes as well, which gives us comfort. And then, we can gain comfort with the, the TEA federal programs that are passed through the Texas Education Agency as well as your state aid. So, finally, your district has earned an unmodified opinion over the financial statements with no internal control findings related to financial reporting for controls and no compliance findings either. The second audit or opinion that we do have to issue is under the single audit. So, we use the Office of Management and Budget Compliance Supplement. Those are the rules by which we have to audit. And any entity that spends over $750,000 in federal funds has to have this type of audit. This year, Leander ISD spent $32 million. And every year, we have to select major programs. Unfortunately, ESAR has been with us since 2020, and we'll probably audit it one more time next year. The reason, too, that we have to keep testing it is because the OMB has deemed it as high risk. And so, we cannot, because of the size of it, we can't give it a break. Every large program has to be audited every third year. That's special education, Title I and child nutrition has to come up in the rotation. And so, this year, we tested ESAR II and III and T-class, et cetera. As far as your government-wide financial statements, your total assets were $1.9 billion. Of that, the capital assets make up that majority at about $1.3 billion. The second-largest asset categories were $611 million in cash and investments, your pooled funds and cash in the bank, but mainly through your pooled funds. You have deferred outflows at $177 million. That's related to your bonds as well as your pension and OPEB items, which we'll go through here in a bit. Your total liabilities were $2 billion with bonds at $1.7 billion. And then, you have those two pesky items that continue to be with us of the pension, net pension liability and the net OPEB liability at $115 and $66 million respectively. I did add an asterisk to the left of the slide, which indicates that these two liabilities, the pension and OPEB liabilities, don't represent a cash liability. Leander ISD is not going to have to cut a check or wire funds to TRS for these. These are financial reporting, and they represent your proportionate share of the statewide liability. Your proportionate share is determined by the contributions that you make compared to the other entities that, that participate in TRS. Your total net position is a negative $130 million. However, when TEA looks at this, they add back the net pension liability and the net OPEB liability, and that amounts to about $178 million. So, you'll actually be in the black. So, you have to do that analysis as well to, to really determine where you're at. And so, TEA does that for first rating. The indicator that does that has been dormant, if you will, for several years. But if it comes back alive, they will back that, those two liabilities out. Just if you study the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report in the back, you'll see some trend analysis and you'll see what the net pension liability has done from last year. It more than doubled, and there's two reasons for that. The interest rate or the discount rate went from 7.25% down to 7%. When the discount rate decreases, that liability increases. There's always an inverse relationship. The second thing is, if you recall, in twenty-two, fiscal year twenty-two, interest rates were terrible. The reason that this net pension liability is as of fiscal year 2022 is because the TRS fiscal year runs from September 1st through August 31st. So, if we were to wait for TRS to issue their reports, we'd be late. So, we always have to go a year behind. So, this liability is measured as of August 31st, 2022, and those interest earnings and investment earnings were terrible. So, that added to that liability. So, those were the two reasons for that liability jump. If we go to the net OPEB liability, you'll see that it did the opposite. The reason for that is that the discount rate went from 1.95% to 3.91%. So, again, when that discount rate increases, that liability decreases. And so, and that has a huge impact on, on the liability. And in the note disclosures, it'll show the sensitivity of just 1% increase or decrease, what that liability will do, and you'll be able to see that. Any questions before we get into your general fund highlights? Okay. Your actual revenues in the general fund were $463 million, and they were less than your final budgeted amounts by $400,000. And that is a hundredth of a percent within budget. So, that's pretty close to budget. Your actual expenditures of $441 million were less than the final budgeted expenditures by $31 million. And based on, on the MDNA, it's based on positions that were not filled, and you did not need to use that budget. The other financing sources or uses were a total of negative $11 million for transfers coming out of the, of the general fund. Your total fund balance increased by $11 million even after the transfer out. So, your total ending balance for the year was $190 million. If we, here, you can see how you fared by revenue category. And so, you'll see that the, the largest gap was between your local revenue, and I suspect with property taxes as well. But again, overall, it was within $400,000 out of your $400 million-plus dollars in revenue, $400 million. When we look at the percentage makeup of your revenues, you'll see that your property taxes makes up 82% or $382 million of your total revenue in the general fund. And state aid makes up 7% or $33 million. And again, there's another inverse relationship here. As you collect more property taxes, the state kicks in less money. And as your property taxes decrease, the opposite happens. And so, you'll see that's the, the stark difference between state aid and, and your property taxes as well. You'll see that you also have some federal revenues as well at $9 million. And the bulk of it is about $6 million of school health and related services or SHARs. And that's on cost reimbursement basis. That's included in there along with some other E-rate and indirect costs possibly. The general fund expenditure budget to actual is also shown here. We know that you were about $31 million under budget, but you'll see that the, the main, the gap, the largest gap was in instruction, instruction-related services and then also in your... I can't see that far, but that's okay. I should have worn, worn my glasses. I apologize for that. Your general fund expenditures, if we look at it in a pie chart, you'll see right where you need to be, 58% or $257 million is instruction and related services with facilities and maintenance at $46 million. I always like to point out the general administration, which is about 2%. And anything we see throughout the state, anywhere between 2 and 3%. And the state uses a metric of 8%. So, if, if you're under that, you're okay. They also aggregate some, some campus administrative costs as well. But just looking at general administration, you are well below that 8%. Now, when we look at your five-year trend in the total general fund and looking at the different components, you'll see that your, your unassigned fund balance has increased significantly. And overall, your, your fund balance has increased. But what TEA is really looking at is that unassigned and assigned category. You'll notice that the orange portion of the graph in 2023 is a lot larger than the previous four years. And that's because the district set aside $30 million in a stabilization assignment or commitments for construction projects and insurance as well. Now, if we look at your general fund, assigned and unassigned, and the reason we don't include the committed fund balance is because TEA does not. They exclude it for first-rating purposes, and so they just look at these two categories. The reason being is that these two categories of fund balance can quickly be utilized or repurposed, if you will, versus committed fund balance has to come back to you as the board, and the, the purpose has to be changed. So, you'll see here, the, the actual line graph tells you what assigned and unassigned fund balance as a percentage of expenditures is. The goal is to be at 25% or more, and each year, you have hit that, that mark when we aggregate the general fund, unassigned and assigned fund balance. So, very healthy fund balance. Now, again, the audit opinion is not saying Leander ISD is healthy. However, if we saw that you were in the danger zone, anything less than 25%, or if you were close to the 12.5%, we would certainly alert you. But there is nothing to worry here based on, on these percentages that are reflected here. I will note, you'll see a peak in fiscal year 2020. That's the year that you changed fiscal years from August 31st to June 30th. And that's a financial reporting bump where you report 12 months of revenue, but only 10 months of expenditures. And so, that's the reason that you see that, that increase in fiscal year 2020. Finally, only two more slides left. We have required communications. Our agreement was signed January 18th, 2023. When we sent our fraud, conflict of interest, related party questionnaires to the board, we also sent a letter talking about the audit risk. And I included here that these two audit risks applies to all audited entities. By no means does it just apply to Leander ISD. So, management override is always a risk. So, we have to structure our internal controls to make sure that no one at the top is overstepping their ability or, or access to the system and overrides the system. So, we do, we do perform tests for that. And then, revenue recognition as well. That is always a risk. Every entity is, is more inclined to appear better than they are, but based on all the ability to confirm with third parties or confirm balances with banking institutions, et cetera, we're able to gain comfort there. So, that is the, the intent or, or of this. So that is the intent or of this communication, to say that it applies to all audited entities, and we've taken or performed procedures to mitigate those risks on our side. There were accounting policies and methods that we have to look and compare, look at and compare to industry standards. And everything was well within what we see at other school districts and other governments. This year, you all implemented GASB 96, which is called subscription-based technology arrangements. And that is the sister pronouncement to leases, which was in effect last year. And this has to do with software. Any agreements that you're entering into that are more than 12 months, you have to report the asset and the related liability. Where in the past, we would do nothing with it. Now they're saying, they being the GASB, is saying, if you're committing the district for multiple years, then go ahead and report now you have this asset, but you also have committed the district for this liability. It does not go on your, in your general fund. It goes at the government-wide level. We didn't have any disagreements or difficulties with management. The last piece of audit evidence is going to come from Mr. Papi and his team, indicating that they provided us everything that we needed to do our audit. And this is not saying that you can't have auditor friends. But if you did consult with other, you can have other friends from other firms. But it's if we were to, if you all were to opinion shop or your management team were to opinion shop, and because we had a disagreement, we'd be required to report that to you here today. And we didn't have that or we're not aware of that. And then anytime that your team asks us for advice or how do we account for something, or this is very odd, our response is not contingent on you retaining us as your auditors. And then finally, the estimates that are included in your financial statements are state aid. Again, it's a fact, two factors, average daily attendance and then property taxes. OPEB and pension liabilities comes from the state. And then finally, the allowance for uncollectible taxes is also an estimate based on historical collections. That is all I have for you today.
I do want to make a couple of comments. One, it is important for the, I think, the management to be able to work with their auditor. We do that throughout the year with the Whitley pin. We do, when issues come up or with a certain entry, maybe out of the ordinary, we do say, hey, this is how we think it should be done. And we're able to provide that to them, have them look at it, and they say yes or no. And they just, so we know that's one less thing we have to worry about during the audit because we know it was signed off on before. So we appreciate that. Also, I do have Ms. Dana Paulson is in the back. She's our Director of Finance. And then also Becky Garcia, she's not here tonight, but she is the one that nailed that revenue down to within 400,000. And then also, we have Jody Levy, but is our new person. But we had our budget person before was Ginah Mishke as well, and give her his credit as well. So we appreciate, it's a team effort. It's like everything we do in LISD. It's not just one, it's a team. So we do it all together, and we're excited to be able to bring you this audit tonight.
Thank you. Board, any questions?
I had a question, just clarifying. This was an audit of our school district's financial records. So during this audit, we looked at our SHARs program. Is that correct through this? It's just, I don't need the details, just we clarification.
Yes, we do, and it's material, yes, we have to look at the, to make sure that the revenue was actually received. Yes, that's correct.
That's all I needed. Thank you.
Any other questions? I just need a motion.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the 2022-2023 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report is presented.
Second.
Christine made motion, shot a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor? Seven in favor, motion passes. Thank you, thank you very much. Next, we're going to move to item 7C1, which is discussion of House Bill 3, Armed Security Officers.
Good evening, Madam President and Board of Trustees and Dr. Geering. All right, tonight, we are here with an update. Last time we were together was in August, and we talked about a good cause exception for House Bill 3 because we were not going to be able to make compliance by September 1st. In that good cause exception, we had an alternative standard that included creation of our own police department for the district and also the use of school marshals. So from that, we went working and looking because we haven't done this before. So we were working on how to do that. And Russ and I were working on a couple of factors. One is the TECO application. So the Texas Commission of Law Enforcement, is that right? Yeah, TECO. There's an application to start your own police department. As part of that application, one of those requirements is a resolution by the board allowing us to create a police department. So part of tonight is discussion on that resolution that we sent to you, creating our own police department. And then secondly, we are ready to talk about Phase 1. I guess I can click here and talk about the purpose. We are ready to talk about Phase 1, which would be hiring of 10 marshals, a chief, assistant chief, and administrative assistant to support the continued work with the TECO application and building out the police department. We have board policy coming to the Policy Committee next week to look at those policies around police department and law enforcement that need to be added, and will be coming to you soon. And then we also have considered whether or not we need a consultant to help us with the work because we haven't done it before. Russell has been talking to several surrounding and other supports, but we may consider that along the way. That's not in this proposal, but just letting you know that. And so with that, I want to, in the resolution, there's some pieces that I want to talk about, mainly the inter-locals and MOU. So currently, we have an MOU with our, for our current SROs that serve on our campuses. With the resolution, this would authorize us to create either inter-locals because it's more of an espant, so we work together with our police department and our police departments that we have locally. And then also potentially MOUs would change or be updated. We continue to have those and we'll keep those in place until we get to phases where we're not in need of those anymore. But that piece of it, I wanted to highlight for you. HR, we worked with Human Resources to do a market analysis for these job postings. And these are actual salaries at midpoint with benefits for the different positions. And so you can see the chief, assistant chief, the marshals, and administrative assistant, thanks to Human Resources for doing that market analysis to determine what those salaries at midpoint would be. And then we, again, are estimating what that training would cost for those 10 marshals to send them to the 80 hours of training that's required for that. The insurance, we did work with risk management to get an estimate for what that cost would be initially. That will go up. That's without some police cars and some various other things. So that may go up as we go through the phases of implementation. And then equipment, again, is an estimate similar to what we brought to you in August around how much it would cost for uniforms, gear, all the things that would be needed to supply these, this first phase with supporting the district. We will, this is going to be brought back, this discussion tonight, action on the 30th for the budget amendment and the resolution. Questions? Comments?
So we talked ahead of time.
We did.
Okay. But, so I don't need to prompt you, I guess. I will go ahead then and start, and then you can follow up with the conversation. Since you didn't bring it up, I'll go ahead and mention it. There's a definition that I like of safety. Safety, 1999 Williams, in a study they said, and it means defined as physical, psychological, social, emotional well-being, the absence of threats to basic needs, which includes shelter, bodily protection, belonging, social support, inclusion. And when I look at the SRO, what the purpose of law enforcement in schools is to also ensure a safe and healthy learning environment as well. I appreciate all the discussion, all the work that y'all have done. I am thankful that y'all have done so much research and looked into this. But the problem or the concern or the issue I've been wondering is, how are we balancing putting a police department into a school environment? And I know other people do it. But when I asked you about the resolution, that was one of the things that I asked you about is the resolution seems to not give a nod to that of like, we're bringing a police department into our school setting. What is the board's expectations? And so one of those statements we talked about was that could we add a statement? And I'll say what the statement is, and I'm not really picky on the wording, but this gives us the thought for the next question, which is whereas the district and the Board of Trustees intends for the overall mission of law enforcement in schools to support and promote healthy relationships to ensure a safe learning and teaching environment within the school setting by working as a team with students, parents, and school staff. This is the exact language from our Texas Safety School Center SRO page, front page. So that just kind, I think that gets us kind of what we had talked about previously, and you can go from there.
Thank you, Trish. When we discussed, there was a couple of things that I was, I wanted to think about. This, when Russell did research on finding the resolution, this resolution was similar to other resolutions to get the creation of the police department, which, so I don't know where, I'm at the will of the board to where that language goes, whether it goes in this resolution, which is the initial creation, allowing us to create and move on the progress that we need to submit for the TECO application, or whether that goes in further, either in our operating procedures, all of those types of things. And Russell actually sent the training, and there's some language in there that I think I heard similar to when we had a discussion that talks about some of the concerns that I think I've heard as we move to put police department within LISD.
And I'd like to agree with you on the training. So you can, we can wrap that one up because I wrote that in as, it would be great if we could put it in our resolution. It's like, no, that's probably policy. But one of those things, and I know you're aware of this, it's on our, the site from the Texas School Safety Center, which says that mandated training includes child and adolescent brain development, mental health crisis intervention, mental and behavioral needs of children with disabilities, de-escalation techniques, and techniques for limiting the use of force. And I agree, that's policy language as well, possibly. But we'll have board, if y'all want it somewhere else, that's fine too.
Right. So I'm open to, if we want to look at the resolution and adding that language in there, y'all let me know, and we'll be happy to look at how to fit that into the resolution as it sits.
My question is just, what does it, what, by putting that language in, the first part, not the training, not the policy, but by saying something like, we're going to ensure a safe learning and teaching environment, or anything that brings that humanity part that we're looking for in resolution, is there a problem with that?
Not that I'm worried about. I talked to Sean, and this is again, that part of the application process that'll go in there. This is your resolution. We are providing language that we have used and seen before. So your resolution to adjust as you feel see fit.
I had a comment. So when we're going as far as, you know, putting this together and especially going through policy, we do have a great policy that this board put together, AEA local policy in regards educational equity in it. I think for me, you know, when we start talking about, you know, establishing police departments, we can go down this rabbit hole, the data supports it. So I think when we start talking about this policy and also start informing this police department, we really start thinking about our local policy that this board put together to ensure that our students are being targeted because of the color of their skin or because of their disabilities, that we really truly fall into this policy and make sure that we're aligned with it. That's where I'm really going with this because I know our hands are tied here. This is mandated. Nobody likes it, but it is what it is. But for me as a trustee, to ensure that our kids are safe at all levels, I would really like us to really lean into this local policy.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm curious for the board, then when you say lean in that local policy, is that just a note to policy to look at that as we're doing that discussion? Or should we put something? Is that, and is that your request that we say something about in recognition of AEA local?
I mean, we have the, we don't need, I mean, if we want to cite it, we can. But I mean, the policy is pretty clear. And I would, I would, I mean, we have this policy for a reason. So I would really like for our administration and the Policy Committee, when you're deciding this local policy for our police department, we really lean into this because this is a lot of concerns that many of us board members and community members have when it comes to establishing a police department. And that's why we made this policy, so that students have equity across the board.
I think the whereas statement that you read, Trish, the way I'm reading this resolution as it sits right now is simply the establishment of. And it's like, I feel like there's going to be another resolution when we implement. So maybe, I mean, am I assuming that correctly? That there will be another resolution of implementation or not?
At this point, I don't know of another resolution. This is for the application piece so that we can get our number to form a police department. After that, there's policy that goes in, and then there's a full operating and procedures manual, which address a lot of the things. We can have the equity statements in there. We can talk about the mission of the police department, all of those types of things in our operating and procedure manual that can capture a lot of that.
I feel like that's the appropriate place for that. I think that this, the way it's written here gives you guys the checkbox to be able to move forward to do, of course, like what Anna said, the thing that we don't want to have to do, but we have to do because it's mandated. Thank you.
And I appreciate the board having the discussion because I think that's just important that you had said, we'll have the discussion as the board, and I appreciate that. I'm curious, is the board's desire or would the board be amenable to adding one, two, three, four, five, six, seven words? Whereas the district desires to enhance the safety and security of the entire district and add the following, to ensure a safe learning and teaching environment, including in all of its campuses. So that one change to just at least do that bit of a nod of all these discussions that we've been having.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I think all the details will come later in policy, but adding that little piece in, I don't have any issue with that.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I have the same reaction as Gloria, that the details are going to be in policy.
And I agree, I'm fine with that. But thank you all for having some of that discussion. I think that's important as we're starting to kind of head down this path.
So just, I want to clarify, which whereas, did you put that in, Trish?
Whereas the district desires to enhance the safety and security of the entire district, comma, and then to ensure a safe learning and teaching environment.
Got it. Okay. So I will add that language, and then it will be back to you on the 30th.
Thank you.
All right. Thank y'all.
All right. We are.
Are you comfortable with that going to contend next time? Yes, thank you.
Yeah. All right. Thank y'all. Now we're going to move back up in our agenda. So we're going to move over to 7A, I Empowered Student Learning Formative Review.
All right. Welcome back, Madam President. It is great to see you, although your fellow trustees held down the fort while you were gone. They did a great job. All right, you caught me flat-footed. I was practicing my other presentation when you called us up, but we're ready here. So we're here tonight to talk about a familiar topic, but we're taking it to the next level. We've been talking for, you've seen many presentations over the last few months about our strategic plan, our district improvement plans, campus improvement plans. You've seen presentations on every goal. You've seen presentations on those leading measures, data, achievement data, climate survey data, all kinds of information about how the goals were set and the why. Today, we take it to the next step with goal number one. We'll be talking and reporting out to the board on the work that's being done, how the system is responding, what actions we're taking, and the progress on those actions in order to meet our goals. All right, so I should be clicking too, I guess. Boom. This is also very familiar to all of us. For two years now, we've all been working together, trustees, administrators, campus teams, to achieve alignment across our system between our strategic plans, our community-based accountability system, our superintendent evaluation, and those district and campus improvement plans. So like I said, tonight, we're going to give you an update on goal number one, empowered. empowered student learning, specifically empowering students through meaningful learning experiences to optimize growth and embody the Leander ISD graduate profile. And as we present on the work we're doing, we'll, we'll also show some evidence, that, uh, of the, of the progress and how the fruits of our labors are showing up in our daily student learning and in the goal setting and ownership and all that good stuff, um, in our school system. This, uh, we, we put some pictures on this first slide because at the top, you see a couple of good friends here, um, that through the work of, of the board and administration and campuses, we've been able to offer and continue to offer the Leander ISD Virtual Learning Academy. And, uh, families are, are empowered to decide if this learning environment is best for their students. And these two buddies met for the first time face to face at an in-person activity night recently. At the bottom, uh, you see students collaborating and communicating with each other uh, to inspect, analyze, and dissect a sheep's brain at one of our high schools. It's hard to see there, but you see one student with the lab procedures there. You see another student, um, making labels and also, um, directing the student who is, um, making the cuts, uh, to the brain there. Oh, here you go.
All right. Um, so when we look at our goal of, um, goal one, empowering student learning, we also want to help you guys remember that we have three, two, three key questions that are associated with this goal. And, um, out of those three key questions, or out of all of our key questions, we do ask our campus principals to focus in on three. Um, for goal one, our three key questions, the first one zeroes in on meaningful learning that is tied to aptitudes and passions. Our key question two focuses on academic and personal growth to prepare our students for the future. And key question three is where our students are demonstrating the attributes of the graduate profile. So if we are to achieve this empowered student learning, the impact that will have on our students is our students will have agency over their learning. They will build a growth-centered mindset and feel empowered to pursue their dreams. And so today, we are going to show you through pictures and through talking through some of what that work is and what our system responses will be to create that benefit for our students. So, um, we will do that with some pictures of our system, of that work, and then also some pictures within our classrooms. All right. So, uh, setting the stage, the empowered student learning started well before we had our kids come back, our students come back. Um, in fact, if you notice that picture that we have, some of our board members are there with us at our leadership retreat this summer.
You knew it would turn up.
And, um, you are depicting the theme that was there in our leadership retreat. And we have said it many times, there is no place like home. And that really hones in on, we have all that we need here within Leander ISD. And the foundation of that is within our guided documents. This year also with setting the stage, we've had, already had multiple school visits. Our school visits, um, for our, for each and every campus, where we team with district personnel, campus admin- administration, teaching and learning, area superintendents. And the purpose of that is to walk our classrooms and then align our supports with our individual campus needs. Um, we have also had some specific professional learning focused. Hagan has, um, come, we have brought Hagan in as a system and multiple campuses have received that training. And then we've also had some explicit professional learning with our math and reading initiatives. And then, of course, we just had this week, it feels like it's kind of been a long week, um, but we had our 30th, uh, continuous improvement conference, which, uh, we again had some focus in for sure on that empowered student learning.
All right. Let's just leave that picture up for a little bit longer so everybody can get a good look at it. We will start with the first system response, um, to goal number one, student empowered learning, creating and supporting, um, deeper learning for all students and staff. So we've worked to address this, um, area at, in both the systems level, um, system-wide, and then at the campus level as well. So first we'll look at the systems level. We've been working to, on developing a system-wide, deeper learning framework. Our keynote speaker, um, just Tuesday morning, for Tuesday morning, our keynote speaker, uh, which was attended by, you know, thousands of our staff, uh, was Jay McTye. I see, um, Trish Bodie nodding her head. Uh, he's a, he's a pretty famous renowned educator and, um, expert on deeper learning. And he talks about deeper learning as students' ability to transfer knowledge, to apply knowledge to new and unique situations and challenges, uh, creative problem solving, real-life situations, and student ownership. And these are the foundations of the work that we've been doing to revise and reshape our curriculum and the learning experiences that our students have on a daily basis, not only in extracurriculars and career and technical education programs and specials, but also in those core content areas on a daily basis. Dr. Clark will be talking in a moment, uh, to give a progress update on our LISD math initiative, as well as our early literacy initiative focusing on that, um, phonics and reading intervention. So at the campus level, um, 24 of our schools have chosen, uh, this particular area to focus on deeper learning, um, yeah, in, as a part of their campus improvement plan. So as we continue to facilitate, um, deeper learn, we've, we're doing deeper learning workshops. We continue to do deeper learning workshops and deeper leading institutes, uh, with campus leaders and, and district and campus staff. Uh, we recently, um, added a new cohort, um, in the south. We are expanding our, our partnership with New Tech Network, which is a deeper learning organization, uh, primarily focused on project-based learning. And then, um, you, you heard a little bit about, we have two incubator EDU programs at the high school level now. We have three mobile maker EDU programs at our other three high schools and our fourth high school, that, that final high school is in the process of getting the mobile maker set up as well. Um, you heard from Wiley today, relative to mixed inke EDU. That's the middle school entrepreneurial program. Uh, we have that program now set up in all except one of our middle schools and I'm not going to name which one that is, we'll get it there. And then currently fresh inke EDU, which is the elementary version, is in 10 of our elementaries. Um, over the last couple of years, you've heard a lot of talk about the expansion of maker spaces, um, across our campuses. And you've also heard, uh, some of the highlights of our partnership with, with the Thinkery Austin. And, um, what's happening is in particular in our early childhood programs relative to, um, outdoor learning spaces, but also we're partnering with them now. We've expanded the partnership, uh, to train librarians, um, in the maker space, um, area. So that's pretty exciting stuff as well. So now you get a few additional photos. When we talk about deeper learning for all, in Leander ISD, all means all. So that first photo on the left, you see in our Parents' Teachers Program, right from the earliest years, you see here, we have parents, um, engaged with their toddlers in meaningful learning experiences together. Uh, photo two is, is one of the hallmarks of deeper learning, that, um, that innovative spark that comes from that student creativity and that empowering students, uh, to think and creative problem solve. These three students are showcasing an invention design that they have created to, it's a, let me make sure I'm getting this right. It's a keychain, almost forgot that part. It's a keychain that, um, can hold a small albuterol inhaler uh, that could be a life-saving device at, at hand for a student. And also, they said, to minimize interruptions, uh, to learning experiences um, when it's needed, but not, you know, not an emergency situation. So that, that thirds, that third photo here, um, relative to student leadership and ownership of their learning, um, and, and the direction that their learning will take, will take, you're familiar with the Leader and Me programs. Um, we now have three lighthouse schools, a lighthouse elementary schools, um, in our district. And all students at Leader and Me Lighthouse Schools set both personal and academic goals from kindergarten up through fifth grade. And those kindergartners have some really amazing goals, um, as well as all the other grades. Right here, you see, uh, lighthouse leadership, student, student leadership team at one of our campuses. All students, um, have access to, um, applying to be a part of their student lighthouse leadership team in our Leader and Me schools. As we talked a, a little bit about the, um, campus, uh, campus level initiatives for deeper learning, uh, one of the innovative and transformative approaches that can be taken and is being taken, taken by some of our elementary schools is universal design learning, or UDL, as you see right here. Um, it might be hard to see, but this is a poster that a student did, uh, depicting his school experience and his classroom environment prior to having universal design learning, um, come into his campus. Now, now, UDL i- is about, um, still having firm goals and fir- or firm, uh, outcomes and standards, but having flexible means, um, with which students can, can learn, the learning modalities, the methods for demonstrating mastery. And for this student in particular, flexible seating and flexible invite, learning environments. Um, in the middle, uh, you see that the empowerment and choice in learning. Uh, this particular project was, um, focusing on, uh, again, how to increase access for students with disabilities. And I, I was, I remembered when I took the photo, but I think this is, it says, Operation Chargeable Hand. And, um, Anna, maybe you can add a couple of details about, about what, I think you saw them and they were able to like, um, curate that for you as well. And that's the last picture too, is just one of the most important, or a very important aspect of deeper learning is that, that student ownership of learning and sharing their learning, exhibiting their learning, displaying their learning, and being able to curate it and communicate articulately about it to other, to other students and, and others, you know, other human beings. I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Clark. I can stop if you want, or do you want to?
Yeah, I'd call it. Good evening, everybody. Um, so we're moving into the section of goal one, uh, which is empowered student learning, but we're going to move into the section that relates to key question two, which was, just to remind you that it focuses on skills and opportunities needed for academic and personal growth of, of students that will serve them outside of and well beyond school. And so the system response here is about promoting the ownership of, uh, learning by the student. So you see on this particular slide, some of the big work, some of the strategies that fall within this key question or system response. The first one being that goal setting. And all of this ties so much to the deeper learning stuff that, that Dr. Benz just talked about. It overlaps, uh, quite a bit. So the goal-setting, uh, self-reflection, uh, progress tracking, uh, student portfolios, exhibitions, it's different ways for students to engage in their learning. And you can even see the picture there that there, there are some, s- several sticky notes of wildly important goals that students have written. So goal-setting can be something I'm going to work on for today, or this week, or maybe for the entire year, goal-setting around performance on an assessment. It can take on many different formats and I'm going to get into that in just a little bit more. I talked to you about our reading intervention redesign and the phonics instruction last week as part of our, uh, House Bill Three and, uh, progress monitoring update, but I'm going to just revisit that a little bit in, in just a minute as well. And we have some pictures to, to bring, bring that work to life for you. But assessment by administrators, teachers, and students, um, to measure and inform learning is, is a big part of work that we're doing this well, this year as well. And it, this year, it feels a little bit more like behind-the-scenes work, so to speak, that we're putting, not putting together, but redefining our, um, balanced assessment framework for the entire district. Uh, where we've, we are reviewing it with our campus administrators and all the folks in the curriculum and it's really everybody in teaching and learning, um, to see where we need to make some adjustments, add additional assessments, and, uh, also really focus on the purpose of each of the assessments that we give and how we expect, uh, district staff, campus administrators, teachers, and primarily students to utilize the data when those assessments are given. So that's where we get down to that student ownership piece where, when we give a map math test, which I talked to you guys a lot about last week, how does that score travel to the student? And how do they understand what that means for them and their learning? So that's a big focus on, on, of the work at our level with campus administrators so that when we start rolling into 2024, even, even the spring semester 2024, but the 24, 25 school year, how can we start working towards making sure that's happening on a systematic level? Um, so that, that's a broad overview of that work. And then we'll move on to, back to the student portfolios. So you can see some pictures here. So we're showing student portfolios, but again, this is all encompassing. Portfolios can include the, the goals that students set. They can track them. If you can imagine a student who starts in kindergarten, who's tracking and compiling goals and then work that shows progress toward those goals all the way through our system and how they could, uh, leave our system with, with a lot of, uh, of, of work products to show their work over 13 years. Um, on the bottom left, you can see the picture, that's a, a template for a digital portfolio from West Side. Um, some of the work that's been done by, um, our digital learning team is that they have compiled, uh, quite a few resources that are available to schools, but a lot of the, it's almost like a sharing of resources. And just about every campus has some type of template, uh, represented on there. So if, if a teacher or a grade or a campus is focusing on this particular, um, part uh, in, in their campus improvement plan, they're able to go there and find those resources and they're not having to build that from the ground up. One of the things that's really cool is the digital learning coordinators and specialists run an empowered learning institute and we have 58 teachers, uh, participating this year. A big focus of that work is, is around, uh, the portfolios and how to, to, how to, to do that. So there's quite a bit of planning from a teacher perspective on how to put these things together. And, uh, you can see on the top right, uh, that picture is, is a picture of our Empowered Learning Institute group. Um, in the middle, you can see an example, uh, of some of the, um, goal work at, in a fourth grade classroom. And then back to the, the digital learning team again, I just added this last minute. They did a session at CIC at, we, see, this was my first CIC, just side note, it was amazing. As Dr. Gearing said, that, I, I've worked in four districts. Nobody had, nobody, none of them have done anything like that. So I, it was su- such a blessing to be there. But one of the popular sessions was just sharing resources on how to manage portfolios and do that work. It was, it was packed. So we appreciate our team for doing that. Um, let's see. I'm never good at this, I should let you do that. There we go. So we did talk about the reading intervention and phonics, um, instruction. Just quickly to revisit that, we did change the intervention, uh, model in K and one i- in collaboration with our SPROG team, uh, moved to a push-in model based on data within Leander ISD for, from a, a program study. And that we wanted things to be more effectively. So we restructured the way our reading specialists at the elementary campuses are used. They're going into the classroom and doing some co-teaching around phonics, but also working with students either right there in the classroom, as a teacher is, is working with a group, or in some cases, they may pull them right outside in those common areas and work with students. It's a beautiful thing. Every, every, I was at an elementary school today. It seems like every school I go in, there are two teachers working with kids in classrooms, which is great for students, so, um. And then the phonics was a focus on better utilization of the resource that we have. So we had phonics word study as a resource, but there's a lot, there was a lot of work involved with pulling all those resources together to ensure that they cover the TEACs. And so what our curriculum writing team did there was, was, um, write the curriculum, pull the resources together in such a way that teachers, it, it reduces the work for the teacher when they're actually sitting down to plan the lessons that they're going to deliver. In addition to that, they're having the, the actual student resources created, copied, and sent to every campus for, uh, the teachers to utilize. So they, that takes one big step out for them. So that, that takes one big step out for them. Big piece of this is all kindergarten, first grade teachers receive training at the beginning of the year. And then we have followed up throughout the year with some training, and we'll do so again in February when we have our next district day. So in these pictures, you can see that on that far left is a reading specialist working with a group of students at a, at a table in the classroom. And then in the, that second picture there, you can see two students, a big part of the phonics work is they are doing some learning, but then they're also interacting, that academic discourse between them where they're practicing letters or sounds or sight words. And then the third picture there is, I believe, from a professional learning opportunity for some of the teachers where they were sharing out some of the discussions that they were having. And then you can see on the far right, a teacher delivering a phonics lesson in a classroom as well. Just recently, with our instructional coaches at the elementary level, our English Language Arts Team at the elementary level, we're getting feedback from our instructional coaches on how things are going, what are obstacles. And I think this is a really important piece that I didn't share last time, I didn't have this information, but we're getting that feedback. It's not just, hey, here's this, you guys go and do. We want the two-way communication around how is it, how is it going? You know, what are the obstacles? What are the holes that teachers are finding so we can make adjustments and, and refine our curriculum for teachers? Next week, we're going to offer this as a session to our principals when, during our leadership meeting so that they can also sit with our coordinators and give them feedback in that same format as well. All right, so I'll move on to math. Just as a reminder, this is, the math initiative was again focused on better utilization of the resource that we have. For secondary, we did add an additional resource, but for our elementary grades, which are two through five, the focus was on our Bridges resource that we have. We provided training for all teachers in grades two through six and our Algebra One, and that is ongoing throughout the year as well. Just like the phonics, we have support through our instructional coaches, ongoing communication, and our principals as well. In addition to the resources and the training, we did add those additional math specialists that are, that are district positions, but they are housed on campuses. So five ele, five elementaries and two middle schools have specialists, and I, I listed them for you last week. If I tried to do it right now, it'd be embarrassing because I wouldn't be able to remember them all. And then we did have additional collaborative teachers at seven campuses as well. Those collaborative teachers are working with students in the fourth and fifth grade to co-teach. So the, the specialists work primarily with teachers to support planning, designing intervention. So there's a slight difference in those roles for sure. And again, the training was a huge focus of, of this as well. A big part of this, and I'll draw your attention to the picture on the bottom left, that is a picture of a number corner. I think I referenced this last time. Number corner is a, is a very key daily routine that's a part of our math curriculum. And, and it spirals key skills throughout the year. So it looks like what you may remember from calendar time, like in a kindergarten or first grade classroom where, you know, the kids might look out the window and check the weather, and it's cloudy today, let's put some clouds up, which is great. But this is, this is high-level math thinking on a daily and routine basis. It's just an opportunity to review nearly all of the teaks by grade level on a daily basis, notice patterns. And when you observe this done and done well by teachers, it is amazing what kids draw out from these patterns on the different shapes and colors and that appear on the calendar. And I just remember being in one classroom, and I think maybe Kristin and I were in this one together where the, this student noticed a pattern, and all the adults were like, none of us noticed that pattern at all. It wasn't in the teacher's manual, it wasn't one they were supposed to notice, but it was certainly amazing. So, and then that top-left picture, I'm going a little bit out of order, that is from beginning-of-year training that we did with all of the teachers on the Bridges resource that happened in those beginning-of-year training days. That top-middle picture is students, so I love seeing this as building thinking classrooms where kids are solving problems in a variety of ways. So teachers may, so if you think about a traditional math, or maybe what you experienced where you get a sheet of problems, or maybe you have 10, and everybody's working independently and solving theirs, but this gets kids up out of their seats around these boards that are around the classroom. And the teacher may put various problems up or present different problems, and then these kids, there's a structure to it where one student does the writing, but the other ones are thinking and directing the writer. So there's really group academic discourse around how to prob, how to solve this problem. And then if you look to that picture on the bottom right, you can see that kids are solving problems in a variety of ways. So it really generates deep academic discourse around math. And when students are having that type of discussion, there's a lot of high-level thinking and problem-solving going on. And you can see again, on the top right, that looks like a pretty passionate discussion around some math to me. So it's been an amazing opportunity to, to, to see kids engage in this work, and that's happening in elementary and secondary. And then just a quick review for sixth grade and Algebra One, the new resource is DESMOs. And then the focus on the NCT, the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics, there are eight instructional strategies that are really good for any classroom, but they're great in the math classroom. And then again, we are absolutely involving our principals in developing classroom look fours and, and walkthroughs. And I believe that was it. I hit all of those.
All right. If you'll Vanna. For me? Thank you, maybe? Okay. So the third system response that we are looking at tonight is support the acquisition of the Leander ISD graduate profile. And to me, this takes all of that empowered learning that we want to see, and it puts it all together, right? So we do have 12 campuses that are using this as one of their focus of their three key questions, and a couple of system-wide things that we have going on. We have a graduate profile resource website. We are continuing our affirmation walkthroughs as a district, but then also what we have seen this year, campuses individually have begun doing affirmation walks of their own. So what began as a system response that we were utilizing these affirmation walks have now been embedded into some of our campuses as well. We are working with, some of our campuses that are focusing in are working with our parents as well as our students to educate them on what the graduate profile is. And then also, we're looking for the evidence of the acquisition of those different profiles. So as we've been going through this, you've seen a lot of different pictures, and the pictures are the stories, right? So a couple of the stories that you'll see here, you'll see a story of our POWls, and these students are exhibiting that graduate profile of community contributors. They are high school students that go into our elementary schools and work with our kiddos. And then the picture that is down to the right is one of the mini trainings that we had for our teachers for CAGEN. And a lot of what you've heard us talking through, the student-to-student discourse, the academic talk that students are having with one another, those are strategies for collaboration. And CAGEN is one of those collaboration strategies that we are instructing our teachers on so that then they can go and implement that within their classrooms. And this helps us create skilled communication and collaborators. All right. The story for the first picture is some members that were putting together items for our backpack attack. And those students were, are exhibiting the community contributors, and they, we are empowering our students while they are also supporting others with community-needed resources. And in the middle, if you look at that picture, let's tell this story. That, those are two members of our 18-plus students, and they are discussing their post-secondary goals with the Concordia education majors. So this is an example of how we are creating our students and helping them to be adaptable, flexible, and reflective thinkers. And then that picture on the right is a picture of one of our student panels. And this student panel is unique because these students were presenting to our, at our IA summit, and they are teaching the people who teach them. And so that is an excellent way to see our graduate profile come to life in our students as they are collaborating with their staff members. So this last slide really are examples of how our campuses are taking in that initiative and really owning the, the way to teach their community. The first picture is something that went out in a principal's smore where they were teaching their, their parents, their community members about the graduate profile, along with what their students individually are learning with the graduate profile. And then to the right, that is one of the slides that was actually used in an every Friday assembly where they focus in specifically. This one is talking, helping our students learn to listen to understand. So as we, as I started this, I'll wrap it up with the same thing. To me, our graduate profile, it is that North Star. It is where we want our kids to exit our system with, and so it does encompass the other parts of that empowered learning. And we are open for questions or discussion.
Are we making the kids independent?
I'm sorry?
Are we making the kids feel independent?
How are we making them feel independent?
Well, I see a lot of things about critical thinkers, skilled communicators, collaborators, compassionate community contributors, adaptive reflective individuals, but the part that I would like to see is where we're talking about them being independent. You know, that, that it's great to work with a group, but I can go out on my own and be successful because once you go home, your parents eventually want you to leave home, and in order to do that, you need to be independent, you need to feel confidence and hope that you have the knowledge to do it.
I, I think you bring up an excellent point, and that really gets covered in that student ownership piece. And that is a giant focus with deeper learning is students having voice and choice in their learning. Dr. Clark presented a little bit on those student portfolios, and in those portfolios, students set their own academic goals. They, they monitor the progress of those goals, and they continue to track those goals and set new goals, both personal and academic. That, I, I love the, the picture with the slide that Kristin talked about relative to our, our 18-plus students really working on that. 18-plus program is all about independence and, and going out into our community to, to over 200 different industry partners and community organizations to, to do meaningful, paid, and voluntary, voluntary work. And to see those students presenting to future teachers studying at Concordia to be teachers and having them provide the insights and, and having Concordia understand the value of hearing from those students as they share their post-secondary goals. And these are the goals that they've come up with. Trustee Smith, I know you wanted to add something to this conversation.
I just want to say I got to go to my children's parent-teacher conference this year because we had them here, you know? When was it, in October? The elementary, I can't remember. But what I loved about it is that what, exactly what you're saying, the students had their profile, they got to see where they've been at for the year, what goals they're setting. But most importantly, what I loved is I got to see my Jack and the progress he's made in the last two years. So our students are making goals, and I just appreciate y'all setting up that system because it's been so empowering, empowering to see my own child totally take the initiative to be like, oh, I need to get an A on my math test. So thank y'all.
I love that, and I won't talk a lot. I know I've been working on that. You haven't seen me as much this year. But also when we look at how students learn, students are, we're, we're working to facilitate them to discern the modalities of learning, the types of learners, how they learn best. So when approaching or attacking, whether it's an assignment, a project, a real-world problem, that they know themselves. They are getting to know themselves better, and that is the epitome of independence, being able to make the best informed decisions about themselves and, and to ensure success. Other questions?
I was going to say, I, I need to go take that course with the kids because it has taken me a while to learn, how do I learn best? I know that I like talking about stuff that helps me learn. And I was going to ask you, there were two parts where we talked about our math and our reading and, and the work that we're doing. My learning for that one, when I see the visuals, I find like I'm, I'm like chasing all the shiny objects and looking at all the great pictures, and, and so I'm just curious, with these initiatives that we rolled out in both, in both math and reading, are you seeing the progress that you wanted to see? Are we trending in the right direction? Are the look fours, are you doing those right now? And how does it look?
And I should let you talk in a second, Dr. Clark, but Dr. Grisip and I were just talking about this today, as were Dr. Gutierrez and I, having this conversation about what we're seeing in, in our school improvement visits. So between all of us, we are, you know, we're all, we're going to every school on these school improvement visits, and that's where we are not only hearing from campus leaders about what they're focused on and how their system response is, right? What they're doing on campuses to, to grow and accomplish those goals. But then even more importantly and more powerfully, we are getting out into the classrooms that all those pictures, we took them, and we're seeing, and we've got tons more, but you can only fit so many per slide. And, you know, this morning I was out on a campus watching number corner like Dr. Clark talked about in action, watching students talk about, I'm not going to share the whole story, but it, it was an insane story where this second grader was, set himself up for a multiplication program, problem that the teacher said, here, Jack has 55 apples, Bryn has 33. What kind of questions might you have that would need answers? And people were saying, how many apples are in all? Other kids were saying, how many more apples does Jack have? And this student said, you know, I've got the hardest problem of all. And I said, well, tell me about it. And he's like, 50, it's a multiplication program or problem. I see his partner feverishly writing 55, 55, 55, 55, 55, using his, the strategy he has as a second grader to do 33 55s. And they were writing it on the whiteboard. He didn't have no space, but I wasn't going to tell him that. And the second grader said, I think it's going to be over 1K. And I was like, 1K? And he's like, you know, 1,000. I'm like, it, you know what? It might be. And then the, but, but the best part of all is he said, for the first time, this is a second grader, for the first time in my life, I am really challenging myself. And I said, wow. And he goes, yeah, I used to take it easy back in first grade. And I was just, this, I mean, I was thunderstruck by this kid in second grade, and just the kinds of complexity and rigor that was self-imposed, that students were empowered well above the rigor of the teak that was the teaks that were assigned for these students at the second grade level for this activity. So this is what we're shooting for, right? And that's the type of ownership and, and internal or intrinsic motivation that deeper learning can, can have in the student ownership and graduate profile, all that stuff.
So with the presentation that, with the presentation that you gave and just what you have been observing, it appears that this lends itself more to not objective, like getting, taking data, but actually just watching the, the students and making sure that they are participating, that they're learning. And eventually, it, it might translate to their goals being met, but just as they are going through this process, it's not like there is some objective measurement that you're going to be gathering through the process.
So the, the common look fours that we developed with campus principals and, and folks in the CNI department is a little more hard data, so to speak, where we're going in looking for specific things to see what practices are pervas, pervasively occurring across the district. It's more of a, a program check, so to speak, as opposed to evaluating that specific, specific teacher in that moment in time. What, what parts of the, the curriculum, instructional practices, those types of things are we seeing in place? And I think that answers your question as well. And I think that answers your question as well, Trish, is we, we develop those and we are conducting them. We have not comprehensively reviewed the data yet, but we need to collect enough walkthroughs to get a good idea. But the, but the, the qualitative data, so to speak, is that as we do campus visits, we are seeing things in place and occurring in classrooms. It's not, it's hard to quantify it right now.
That answers my question. I was just getting ready to do an email and say, but is there? So thank you, you answered that. And when y'all get something, if you'll just give us an update in a Friday memo as well. But that, that helps me kind of understand then where you're going. Thank you.
Well, and if I can just give you a broader perspective again, remember these are the formative reviews that are monthly. And this is specifically about what is the work that we're doing and not about results yet. And so we'll bring those leading measures back to you as, at timely points to make sure that we're gathering that data.
My only other questions regarding our student portfolios. Ian and I got to visit a couple of elementary schools and saw the amazing work that was done on student portfolios. What do you need from the Board of Trustees to help keep doing that good work? Or are there any things we're doing that is prohibiting y'all from continuing to roll
You are not doing anything to inhibit it. I would say you've empowered all of us to set up systems that, first of all, we do systems wide, but we also, campuses have autonomy to approach things in a cert, in, you know, based on innovative and transformative approaches that they want, whether it's project-based learning, universal design learning, in the inquiry, you know, focusing on inquiry. And so by allowing things to, to grow and people to have that autonomy, I mean, you've set up the environment where people are able to do that. It's like a risk conducive environment so that we can innovate. And so thanks. I, I don't know what else. I mean, I don't know what else. I'm sure maybe my colleagues can think of something.
Any further questions? No? Okay, thank you all. Thank you so much for all the information and for all the pictures. Pictures are the stories. So thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Board, we're going to take a 10-minute break.
Thank you.
All right, we are back from our break and we're going to move over to Agenda Item 7A2, our Counseling Services Update.
Okay, good evening, Board of Trustees and Dr. Garing. We're happy to be with you tonight and we're going to share a little bit of information about the work of the Counseling Services Department over the course of this past year. So throughout this presentation, we're going to share the work of our school counselors as well as our Student and Family Support Team. And we'll talk about many of the partnerships that we utilize throughout our, through our, many of the partnerships that we work. So we're happy to take questions at the end of either section or at the end of the entire presentation. Last year, I began with a short quote by my youngest daughter and I'm going to take the liberty of sharing a quote from my older daughter tonight. This past weekend, she participated in a UIL editorial writing competition and she did win first place. So I want to share a little bit what she wrote. Her prompt was to write about whether a school should purchase an online tutoring program or, and she had to take a stand, so I'm going to read a few sentences of that. So "A tutoring service on a computer cannot compete with instruction from teachers. While students will be able to use TopTutor at any time of day, this does not guarantee their understanding of the material. A teacher in the room to assist students guarantees their understanding, as students can ask clarifying questions and help and get help on assignments. Teachers have the benefit of knowing how the students have learned their subject and details about class assignments and tests, something TopTutor is not capable of having information on." So although she was not writing about counseling services, she was demonstrating the power of the relationship and the connection of staff and students throughout. Throughout this information, throughout this presentation, we will share quite a bit of data with you, quite a bit of information, but behind every data point is a student who is thriving because of a connection. I gotta figure out how to do this clicker and turn, thank you. So this year, I brought some help with me, our two wonderful counseling coordinators who work alongside me. So we have Bethany McPhel on the end, who is in her sixth year as a coordinator for counseling services. Before this, she was a counselor at Leander Middle School for many years. She primarily works and supports our school counselors. Haley Simmons has been with the district since 2016. She just began this year as a coordinator for Student and Family Support Team, but prior to that, she was a Cedar Park High School, School and Family Support Teen Therapist at Cedar Park since 2016. Interestingly enough, Bethany was on my interview committee, so she hired me and then Haley was on, Haley was the first person I hired. We are all deeply connected to Leander ISD. Collectively, we have five children in the district and Bethany wants everyone to know that she is a proud Cedar Park High School band parent and Haley is the room rep for her student, for her son. We're excited about this trio as it has increased our ability to better connect the academic support that our school counselors provide and the mental health support that our student and families provide. So I hope you're able to see that connection as we go through our presentation. Is it working? Okay, that's where we need to be. I don't think the Clarks know how to work clickers. So we're going to begin tonight with one of our guiding documents, the graduate profile, which is one of our favorite documents as it reflects the work that we do as a counseling services team. We believe it's important for our community, our community to understand our work is always grounded in the goals of the district. So we support our students as they attain these critical skills of becoming a critical and creative thinker, a skilled communicator and collaborator, compassionate community contributors, and adaptable, adaptable and reflective individuals. In previous presentations, I've tried to illustrate and tell the story of the work of our counseling services department while also recognizing that much of the work that we do is protected information and it's hard to share them. But every day, over 42,000 students walk through the doors of our campuses and each of their stories is unique. To meet, to meet each student's individual needs, our counseling services staff is many times the connector of the student and family to ensure they are receiving the support they need in order to build the skills outlined in the graduate profile. We know that for students to meet their academic goals, we must first meet the social, emotional, and mental health needs, just like food and housing. It's a basic need that must be met in order for our children to thrive and grow. Oh, it took away the whole buzz of it all. There was like supposed to pop up, but anyway, that's okay. So within our counseling services department, we have connections and partnerships with many organizations in the Austin area and we work with multiple departments and campuses in Leander ISD. So to just illustrate how the counseling services department is the connector for students and families, we want to show and illustrate how we would support a student who enters our system with unique and challenging needs. So one of the agencies we often work with is Williamson County. So the Director of Mental Health for Williamson County contacts us about a student they are working with and serving who is also enrolling in Leander ISD School in the next few days. So the Wilco Director of Mental Health reaches out and asks us for assistance in connecting them with the campus. So we connect them with the campus staff. We set up a staffing in order to receive information from the Williamson County Director as well as provide information on the supports that we can provide. And as part of this process, we have multiple team members from both agencies working together. We also have a signed release of information so that we're able to appropriately share information between agencies. When a student enrolls, we work with the student and family directly and we welcome them to our district and gather any additional information that was not shared or not received in the staffing. As part of this onboarding process, we identify immediate mental health concerns that need to be addressed immediately, so we work with our local mental health authority and the Mobile Crisis Outreach Team to address those. And so while we work with the local mental health authority, we're still collaborating with our Wilco assistant, our Wilco folks and to find a community provider to, for a higher level of care. When our student records are received, we identify the students served through special programs. So we collaborate with them and help them understand the current mental health that are being addressed. So based on the student's needs, that student eventually transfers to a second campus, so our staff works along both campuses on that transition process so they are both, so they are aware of the supports that are available and already in place. So as you can see through this illustration, we work with many departments, private and public, and many, many departments and all of our campuses in the district. So let's look a little bit further at the staff that we support. On the school counseling side, we have 106 staff, 39 elementary, and of those are 35 our school counselors. And then we have four campus-based social workers and on the next slide, I'll explain what the campus-based social worker is. We have 26 middle school counselors, 39 high school counselors, and two Leo counselors. All of those, except for the social workers, the school counselors are licensed and credentialed by TEA. On the Student and Family Support Team, we have 15 full-time individuals. We have 10 licensed social workers and they are either a licensed clinical social worker or a licensed master social worker. We also have five licensed professional counselors. And then through our LEAF funding this year, LEAF grants we received over the last couple of years, we were able to hire two part-time temporary employees and they are one social worker and one licensed professional counselor. Social workers and LPCs are licensed by the Texas Behavioral Health Executive Council. So campus-based social workers is a new position that we worked with our area superintendents last year in our Human Resources Department to create this position. It does not replace a school counselor. So if an elementary school is allocated two positions for counseling services, they can choose to either hire one school counselor and one campus-based social worker or two school counselors. It's up to their choice, it's up to them. The campus-based social worker job duties are very similar to a school counselor and just like a school counselor, they do not provide therapy. So if we look at our ratios, our staffing ratios are moving in the right direction overall. So while we know there may be some specific campuses who have a little bit higher or a little bit lower ratio, we are moving overall to lower counselor-to-student ratios. These ratios are based on enrollment as of October 23, of October 23rd. The overall elementary ratios dropped significantly this year due to a change in our staffing ratios. Elementary campuses beginning this year with an enrollment of 850 or higher are now allocated two positions. So for the 23-24 year, that impacted five campuses. Additionally, due to growth, Danielson and Rouse were both, provided an additional counseling position. And what I remembered last night is I left off the slide and I apologize, also we added a position at Leo, so there's a new position at Leo as well. So as a department, we say thank you all as a board for approving those positions last year. So Bethany will now share a little more detail about work of the school counselor.
All right. Good evening, Trustees and Dr. Garing. One of the favorite parts of my role is the opportunity to support counselors who are new to the profession or new to Leander ISD. This very empathetic-looking group of people are four counselors and campus-based social workers who joined us after last school year began and 20 new counselors and social workers that started with us for this school year. They bring with them a range of experiences and passion to support students at really all the levels. Ensuring new staff feel supported and have all the resources they need to thrive is really important to us. We have multiple layers of support in place for these new, new to Leander or new to profession counselors, including mentors, professional learning communities, multiple check-ins with either Steve, Haley, or I throughout the year. Sometimes it's all three of us, which is rare to get us all in the same place together. This year, we've also been able to partner our new to profession elementary counselors with the opportunity to visit a campus and work alongside a more experienced counselor, kind of following that teacher, new to profession model also. As you may remember, Steve shared with you last year our desire to grow our own within Leander ISD to make sure that we continue to have really high-quality counseling applicants. We launched our first-ever aspiring school counselor program last year and we are excited to share that we had the opportunity to hire five of those individuals from our first year of the program. So they are in that picture, five of them. Year two is in full swing and we are excited to continue to partner with Leander staff who have a dream of becoming a school counselor. So part of supporting school counselors is understanding the work that they do and where they spend their time. As you may remember, Senate Bill 179 was passed during the previous legislative session and went into effect September 1st of 2021. This law required that counselors spend at least 80% of their time implementing a comprehensive school counseling program. As required by law, the board adopted policy DP Local previously. Last spring, the State Board of Education and the TEA released additional guidance on how to track that time and we will talk more about that in a little bit. So looking specifically at the non-counseling duties, during the 22-23 school year, we asked school counselors to submit their non-counseling time weekly. As you can see from this chart, overall, we are under that 20% at each level. In the event that we do have specific campuses that are approaching or going over that requirement, we're working with those counselors and administrators to make any necessary changes. So a critical part of a comprehensive school counseling program is monitoring time spent in all of the areas. The Texas Model for School Counseling and the American School Counseling Association groups the work of a school counselor into five domains. You'll see those five domains on this chart. They are appraisal and advisement, which could be the academic advising that happens during our high school one-on-ones, counseling through individual or small group interventions, the classroom instruction, referral, consultation, and collaboration, which could be time spent working with our friends and student and family support team, and program management. This slide includes data for all of our counselors from elementary to high school and it was collected during five snapshot weeks throughout the year. So we didn't ask them to collect all their time all year, but just during those five weeks. And they submitted their time in 30-minute increments on those, for the whole week of those five snapshot weeks. So overall, the counselor use of time data keeps moving in the direction that we would hope for, with the majority of counselor time spent implementing a comprehensive counseling program. As you will notice in this slide and the slides to follow, the data is fairly consistent for last year, for the last two years. And we really think this reflects our goal of consistency in practice across all campuses. I also want to point out that the non-counseling time will not match from this slide to the previous slides because this is only the snapshot week data, not the whole year data. So looking specifically at the elementary level, you can see counselors spend a great deal of their time proactively working with students through classroom instruction and counseling. I believe at all levels, you will see the counseling services staff being the connector that Steve was talking about through a lot of referral, consultation, and collaboration that they do. We are continuing to see decreases in the non-counseling pretty drastically there and we see an increase in time working directly with students. So on the middle school, with the exception of 2021, the data from middle school counselors has been fairly consistent. And that increase in the indirect services for 2021 was due to so many students receiving virtual instruction and we were doing more on behalf of them. We are pleased to see time spent providing counseling lessons through counseling instruction increasing. So just like with middle school, there was an increase in indirect services for high school for 2021. High school counselor use of time has been the most consistent over the six years that we have tracked this time, with the majority of their time spent indirect and indirect services with students. We are really proud of the high-quality academic advisement that our counselors do and also supporting the mental health of students.
On that chart, I'm just curious, do we ask our counselors if they agree or like that type of split? So we're doing this much time on academics, we're doing this much time with our program, we're doing this much time advising. Do we think our, do our counselors, does our counseling department think that's the right way to do it or is there something we need to help with, right? And I still struggle, so anything you can do to help me understand, there is a difference between, of course, that academic portion, getting them ready, getting their degrees, getting them their letters in, and there's so many amazing things our counselors do. It also is the same person who's working on the other program, helping them with mental health, social, emotional well-being, making sure they feel safe and secure as well. So how is this working for our counselors and our counseling department? And I know this kind of mix is all across Texas. I'm just curious, how is it working for Leander ISD?
I can answer that, I think, and then Bethany, you can chime in if you want. I think for us, what we would like to see at our secondary, secondary level is more time in the classroom, providing some direct skills lessons where we see that at the elementary level, at the higher level, I think that's the one area that I would like to improve moving forward. But I also know that our secondary folks, especially at the high school level, spend a lot of one-on-one time with their one-on-one meetings and also some of the more higher needs that, for the students who walk through. But I think if I were to say what, what I want to see, I would want to see more time that our counselors get to do more larger group proactive things as opposed to waiting for, waiting for our students to come in the reactive mode. Does that answer your question? Okay, okay. This is me. So as previously mentioned, TEA and the State Board of Education provided additional guidance on the use of time data collection, which was written into Texas Education Code. So districts are now required to collect, to collect full use of time each week. So this year, beginning this year, on the first day of school, we are doing weekly use of time and our counselors submit that every Friday or whatever happens to be their last day of work. And so the identified areas to track are provision of a guidance curriculum, responsive services for students, individual planning for students, system support, and non-counseling duties. So each year, TEA will randomly audit districts. If selected for audit, the district will be notified by October 15th. The district will be required to provide their data, their data collection instrument, a copy of the adopted board policy, and the use of time percentages for each previous school year. So if we were selected for audit, we feel very comfortable that we have all this in place and ready to go. We're going to switch gears a little bit and now share information with you about our Student and Family Support Team. So as mentioned earlier, this is a team of 15 individuals who are licensed clinical social workers or licensed professional counselors. These clinicians are licensed by the Texas Behavioral Executive Counselor or the BHAC, which is the governing body and outlines the rules, I mean the ethics for each, that each clinician, excuse me, each clinician must abide by. But most importantly, since our clinicians, our clinicians are providing therapy, they are required to obtain informed consent from parents and guardians before that can happen. We also ask for consent for our students as well because we want therapy to be voluntary. Primarily, this team provides individual therapy and case management to students and their families, but also they work with community agencies, collaborate with campus staff. And through our partnerships with our parents and guardians, we offer parent and guardian coaching because as we know, our students are impacted as, in the family unit as a whole. Another area where our Student and Family Support Team serves our district is through our crisis response. Often, this is when a student or staff member passes away and our team works with the campus administration to support the students who are, and staff who are impacted by this. During this time, our clinician, our team manages the crisis response so that the campus can try to maintain as normal a function as possible for the students who were not impacted. We typically are on the campus for multiple days and see, and we'll see dozens of students and staff members. So in the next few slides, Haley will review some of the work of our SFST during the 22-23 school year.
Good evening. Hold on. Good evening, Trustees and Dr. Garing. I'm excited to share with you the amazing clinical work that our Student and Family Support Team is doing across all of our campuses in Leander ISD. During the 22-23 school year, we had a total of 1,154 referrals. We continue to see an increase in our referrals year after year. One of our goals over the last two years is to increase our early intervention and as you can see, our elementary referrals have increased for the last two years and that's something that we're very proud of. Our middle school referrals have remained steady. Our high school remains our highest referring school. You can see that it has dipped a little and some of that drop, we attribute to our early intervention efforts at elementary and middle school. And we've also identified in, increasing our high school referrals this year as a goal as we proactively teach our students skills that will help them transition into adulthood. And we plan on doing this by continuing to focus on building our connection with our assistant principals and counselors so we are reaching all students in need. There we go. Last year, we had a total of 374 elementary referrals. As I mentioned, we increased referrals at every grade level. And we continue to strive for early intervention because we know that supporting a student's mental health at an earlier age leads to school being a safe and supportive place and that translates to engagement in the school community and increased well-being of the whole child and academic success. We continue to see an increase in our referrals at transition years, which indicates that we're supporting our students through change, which is sometimes difficult even when it's a positive change. Last year, we had a total of 321 middle school referrals. They remain steady, which aligns with our early intervention goals, and we see an uptick in eighth grade, which also aligns with it being a transition year. Last year, we had a total of 459 high school referrals. Our high school referrals continue to show our efforts at early intervention as you see them decline through the grades. Our hope is to intervene early so our students, so we can set them up to move through to their senior year and become critical and creative thinkers, compassionate community collaborators, skilled communicators, and adaptive and reflective individuals. This slide shows our increase in referrals year over year for the last three years from August to October. As you can see, the 21-22 school year, we had an increase of 5.2% in referrals. This year, we've had an increase of 27.3% in our referrals, which is a dramatic increase. We attribute this increase to our 23-24 goal of removing barriers so our students and families can access high-quality mental health care at school. We are achieving this by increasing our connections with counselors and assistant principals and by prioritizing seeing students at school for therapy. We continue to collect data on the students who are referred to our team. As you can see, our referrals primary, primarily mirror our district. As a district, 19.9% of students are identified as economically disadvantaged. Of the students that we serve, over 42% were identified as economically disadvantaged. And we serve all students regardless of their economic status, but we are proud that we are offering services to students who might not be able to access it in the community. We continue to do outreach to our students, families, and community partners to let them know we are available to support them. We will continue to work with our referral sources to make sure we are identifying all students and families in need. In 2021, we began, we began collecting more detailed information about our students who are being referred. In an effort to better understand the students and their needs, we have continued to evolve our data collection so we can be very intentional about capturing the full clinical picture of our students, as you see indicated in this chart. These numbers will not add up to our total referrals as students can have multiple presenting concerns at once. We continue to see anxiety and depression as the top presenting concerns, followed by family and behavioral concerns. Another goal we have for this school year is to continue to increase our parent involvement as we know our students are a part of a system. We do this by providing guardian coaching and family therapy sessions. We continue to track the services we provide students. These numbers will not add up to our total referrals as the student can have multiple levels of support at once. As you can see, we saw 491 students across the district for school-based therapy. The SFST clinicians provided 5,141 school-based therapy sessions, which is an average of 10.5 sessions per student. Referring out indicates we provided families with a referral for a community-based provider. This can happen for many reasons, such as acuity or parent request. You will also see our efforts to support the whole child in our consultation, which is anytime we staff with stakeholders for the students, such as teachers, school psychologists, assistant principals, and counselors. Referring out with SFST services indicates that we saw a student for school-based therapy and then referred them out to a community provider for more long-term treatment. Acute referrals indicate students we see for school-based therapy who we then connect to a higher level of care based on clinical need. Sometimes during the therapeutic process, new or previously unidentified needs arise that indicate a student could benefit from more support at school. And when this occurs, we partner with the appropriate school staff to connect that student to appropriate accommodations so they can get more support at school. In 2021, we set a better goal of understanding our data and why our referrals might not materialize. As you can see in this chart, we now more specifically track why a student who is referred to us might not, might not access services. As we've mentioned before, all of our services are voluntary, so you can see that 100- As we've mentioned before, all of our services are voluntary, so you can see that 114 parents or guardians declined services. A no response indicates that we tried to reach the family multiple times via email or phone and were unsuccessful. Already connected indicates that we, when we called the guardians, we discovered their student was already in therapy in the community and is not clinically indicated to have two therapists at one time. Intake only indicates that the, a parent or guardian did an intake with the clinician and at, at the conclusion of that, it was decided that school-based therapy was not the best fit. As I mentioned earlier, we have a total of 1,154 referrals. So if we remove the referrals in gray, we had 895 active referrals. Of those, we saw 55% of them for school-based therapy. It has become increasingly difficult to access mental health care in the community due to costs, availability of providers, transportation, and scheduling. So in an effort to reduce those barriers, we have set a goal this year to provide at least 65%, to provide therapy at school to at least 65% of those who are referred to us. And as you saw in our year-over-year data slide, we are on pace to likely meet and exceed that goal. Texas Child Health Access Through Telemedicine, or T-Chat, is a legislatively funded telemedicine program that partners with school districts across Texas. We have a memoranding, or Leander ISD has a memoranding memorandum of understanding with T-Chat and the University of Texas Dell Medical School, who provides the services. We are proud to have partnered with them since their inception. Our primary use of T-Chat is connecting the students we see for school-based therapy to psychiatrists for medication management. This is a wraparound effort that includes our SFST clinicians, T-Chat psychiatrists, guardians, and students. All guardians and parents must consent to T-Chat services prior to the intake. Our SFST clinicians facilitate these appointments during the school day to remove barriers for the families who might not be able to access that in the community. We also use T-Chat for our students who are having difficulty attending school with the hope that if they can engage in telemedicine at home, they will decrease symptoms, which will get them back to school, and we can transfer care to one of our SFST clinicians. At the end of each school year, we meet with the T-Chat medical leadership team to discuss our partnership with them and what went well and areas of improvement. And year after year, their team praises our FST clinicians for the high-quality clinical work we provide the students and families of Leander ISD. As you can see here, we connected 64 students to T-Chat. They received 235 appointments of that. Forty-eight of them were connected to ongoing long-term mental health care. And the campus liaison consultations represent our SFST clinicians, meeting with psychiatrists and clinicians at T-Chat to discuss how to best support students, differential diagnoses, and emergency assessments.
To be effective connectors, we have to rely on the relationships and partnerships that we, that we create. So these are our key to the services that we provide our students. So in the last few weeks alone, we've worked not, not only with our campus staff, but we've worked with our special programs department, human resources, curriculum, school and community relations, our areas superintendent, technology, transportation, and even legal. So in previous presentations, I've tried to highlight the work of our counselors and APs that we work together in our joint meetings. This year, our joint meetings are going to look a little bit different because we have two required trainings that the state is asking us to go through. And so threat assessment training was held October 19th with all of our assistant principals and counselors. And then on February 19th, we will have psychological first aid. Our most important partnership is with our parents and guardians. And so to provide our community with relevant and important information, last year with the help of our school and community relation team, we created the Empowering Parent site. So we continue to add information to this site and we'll continue to update it over the months and weeks and years ahead. On October 23rd, we held the Leander ISD College Fair at Vista Ridge High School. We had approximately 145 colleges and universities, military recruiters, recruiters, and community organizations attend. And this is an increase in number of universities which have, in recent years, which was reflective of our reputation of producing high-quality graduates. We were very impressed with the turnout this year. And even though we don't have an accurate way to count every student who comes through the door, I can tell you, we had very full aisles and very long lines this year. And I had to ask people to quite politely leave at 8:15. So we want to thank Paul Johnson and all of the Vista Ridge staff who were so gracious as we brought the college fair to Vista Ridge High School. Whenever you bring a district-level event to a campus, it does impact them and Paul and his team are always so gracious. We also really want to thank the JROTC folks, the students there. They helped our reps from their car to their table and carried items for them, helped direct them. They stayed with us all night. They helped break down the tables. So we want to thank them as well as Captain Fletcher for all of their support. He stayed all night as well. So we're going to end with highlighting our mental health minutes. I wanted to say I had this idea a few years ago, but actually I stole this idea from another district, mentioned it to Bethany, and Bethany just took it away and made them happen. So I'm going to let her describe them.
So as Steve mentioned, this video series started a few years ago from our desire to really consistently promote mental health awareness and reduce the stigma of seeking help for mental health concerns. This vision has grown into a library of over 100 videos used weekly at elementary and secondary levels to share positive messages, messages on a variety of topics. If you are interested in learning more about hot chocolate breathing or how to be assertive, you can check out all the videos on the YouTube channel, Leander ISD YouTube channel. Last semester, we also started partnering, partnering with all of the students in the counseling and mental health course at all of the Leander high schools to identify topics and write content for the videos. And so you, we are really excited to have student voice in this ongoing effort. As you can see, we end each video with a reminder to students, if you or someone you know is struggling, please tell a trusted adult. And a huge thank you to our school and community relations team for making this video possible.
So we thank you for allowing us to be here tonight and share the work of our department. As you can tell, we are very passionate about it, so, but we're happy to take any questions you may have.
You ever heard of a positivity book?
I'm not specifically a positivity book, no.
You don't have that for all the elementary school kids?
I don't recall. I don't think so.
Well, I, I do know for a fact for some of the elementary school kids, they have a, a rating scale and they have to write in their positivity book every day. You don't know what I'm talking about?
I am not familiar with that. I'm not sure.
Are the kids allowed to not like each other? If a kid came in and said so-and-so is having a problem with a recess and, you know, how does the counselor solve that problem? Are they allowed to, to not like each other?
Of course, anyone cannot like someone. What we like to do is problem solve with our students to give them skills to work with, to be, to work on skills to help work, you know, maybe tolerate's not the best word, but to work primarily, you just get to understand, like everyone is different that comes through our door, and if I have a problem with you, that we have to coexist in the same environment.
So they are allowed to like each other? Do you think that message is being spread from the counselors?
I mean, I would assume.
To, to the best of your knowledge?
Yeah.
Well, I know for a fact that some parents are telling me the opposite. And they're having a, a real hard time with that, that, that theory of thinking because it takes away their child's ability to choose. They don't get to not like them. And I've, I've witnessed it actually where a counselor said, everyone has to like everyone here at school. You don't, you can't not like someone. Now, it doesn't mean you can't invite them to your house because that's your space, but here at school, you have to like everyone. And what that does, it undermines the child's ability to think for themselves and to choose. But you've never heard of a positivity book and you never heard that type of counseling?
I mean, I'm not familiar. I don't think, it's not, it's not something that we have, that we've given to every counselor. It doesn't mean there's not, might not be a counselor who's using a positivity book with a group of students, but I couldn't tell you that, I can't sit up here and say that I know that every school counselor has a positivity book that they use daily or weekly.
I, I know as a parent to, to kids in elementary, I have not heard of a positivity book. So I'm just going to throw that out there. I did have a question, though. Y'all talked about parent request. How does a parent go about that? So if I came to you and I'm like, my child, I, you know, I'm not sure what's going on. They're not coming to school. They're experiencing anxiety. How do I reach out to my counselor? How do I reach out to y'all to try to get those services because I might not have access to those services through my private, you know, health insurance? What does that process look like for our parents and students?
Yeah, so we, we ask that you start with your school counselor, but also sometimes our assistant principals make our referrals to our student and family support team. They also come through our school psychologist, but those are our three primary referral sources, our assistant principal, school counselors, and occasionally our school psychs. We ask you generally would reach out to your campus staff that you're very close to, which would be your, be one of those two. And you say, hey, I'm interested in trying to see if my student might have some additional, additional support around anxiety or depression. You know, sometimes a little bit of anxiousness is okay, but it doesn't lead to anxiety disorder. But they can help do that through our consultation with one of our therapists and team members.
Thank you so much. I have been a parent whose child has, we've reached out. I just want to say thank y'all so much for guiding us through that really hard process. And I just appreciate that our district really puts an emphasis on mental health. So thank you.
And I will echo Anna. We are a family that's been very heavily involved with y'all's department and it's been incredible. You mentioned that the students get to input their voice with the mental health minutes. In what other ways do the kids get to contribute to how they might want to receive services or what might work better for them?
So we ask them, we can, they also have access to our school counselors. And our school counselors are doing a wonderful job, I think, of getting out there and proactively getting in front of students in classrooms, especially at the elementary level. But this year, many of our campuses at the secondary level, they are going out through, some of them, at the high school level, through the advisory period and doing, it's like I can say at Vandergriff is one that comes to mind. They will take classes and divide them up. So students who are served through counselor A through C will all go meet in a room with their counselor and they'll have a discussion around a topic, the same thing. So they divide them up so they know their individual counselor. That was one of my goals when we began, when I came here a few, in 2016, was to put our counselors out there in front of students more proactively instead of waiting for students who just come to them. But I would always say, what the message we want to do and we try our best to do it is that our, our school counselors are there not only to change your schedule, not only to help you write a rec letter for college, but also to help you if you're having any struggle, whether it be during those transition years, whether it be having trouble with a friend or having, you know, with, with an issue with a teacher or any issue that might come up. Our, what we really want our school counselors to be is those connectors.
So back in May, we had a presentation from the SISAC, the Superintendent Student Advisory Council, and they did address or talk about mental health and weaving that into some opportunities for students to meet with counselors during flex time. And you touched upon that, our advisory period, and some schools are doing away with some of that time. You're working with the schools to make sure that the students still get the supports that they need.
Yes, we always try to work on that with our, with our campuses and in our counselors and get them out there.
Any other questions? All right.
Wait, wait, I do have a question. I just don't want to cut off Shaday. So I saw her light on and I just didn't want to, I thought she was doing a dramatic pause. It was a great question and I thought there's. So first of all, thank y'all so much. And you've explained two amazing programs tonight, the SFST and counseling, and they're kind of serving different student populations in a way. There's overlap, but I feel like there's a, a different goal. There's a lot of also experience, education, certification that's required for the work that y'all do. So thank you for that. My question is in regards to our population, more of our general population, where students may be having, I want to say anxiety and depression, but not to an extent where you have like an anxiety disorder, but maybe there's a panic moment. And your mental health minutes are attempting, I would argue, to address some of these things of our larger population. Can you tell me what else, or have y'all thought of what else y'all want to do to help address the needs of the social well-being of our students and campuses, especially given that the United States Surgeon General said that we are dealing with an epidemic of isolation and anxiety, depression?
They've told me I have to answer all the questions. No, it's not true. Now I forgot what I was going to say. I was trying to be funny. I think one of the things I want to address is I, it's, I really did not want to say this, but I do want to say, I know we've had an interest in the Hope Squad in our district and that's a very, it's a very positive program. It's difficult to implement because of, you have to have a very committed staff to, to implement that. I don't want to say which campus yet, but I think we found those folks. We had some people last year who were on board. They made some changes and they were not able to do that. But I think we found a team at a campus and we did have a Zoom call with the Texas rep around that. And we are setting up another meeting with that. And the Hope Squad is a student-led organization about removing the stigma of seeking help. It doesn't put them in the position of providing the services. It, it helps them connect. I see you are struggling and so I'm going to connect you with your counselor or your therapist or your parent or whatever. It's more about asking for help. So if we see someone struggling, so I know it's been a long time coming. I'm confident that we're going to get it in place through some planning this year and probably implementation next year. So I wasn't really planning on saying that, but since you brought it up, I will say it.
Well, as one that got to see a Hope Squad presentation at one of our conferences, I cannot tell you how happy that makes me because I know that it will save lives. It will truly save lives. So thank you.
All right. So since that was amazing news, and thank you for breaking it here, I'll ask one more. We'll see. But as, in response to, we talked a long time ago about a grant and we were working with, or you were thinking of working with our district, kind of things we could help our teachers with. I know there were some things that are still kind of developing and so I'm curious, you know, as far as, and, and, and that's a different conversation as far as how do we give support to our teachers for their mental health needs, but we were talking about teachers being able to support students' mental health needs. Has anything else been rolled out from there or are y'all still working on that?
I think, I was thinking about that conversation since we had that. I think what we were talking about was actually the Hope Squad, and I think that's what I mentioned in the presentation. I think, since you brought it up, I do, we are seeing some staff mental health concerns and I think we do, today on the way here, I work with the campus on a teacher who is having some issues. And so while we are primarily student-based, we want to support our staff as well, so.
That's excellent. And I'd love later, not tonight, to get an update on that because I want to hear how we're helping to support our staff. All right. If there's not any further questions, we're going to thank you all for all of that information and really appreciate y'all answering all of those questions. Thank you, thank you. And we're going to move on to item 7A3, our school psychologist update.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Gearing. I am proud to be here tonight with Mary Beth Pennell. She is our lead school psychologist and she is an incredible advocate and support for our school psychology team so that they can provide the best services possible for our incredible LISD students. I do have to start our presentation out tonight with wishing all of our school psychologists a happy National School Psychology Week. They do an incredible job serving our students, keeping our students safe and ensuring that they get the services that they need to be successful and independent in their living. And I also want to thank our school board as well as our SCR team for highlighting them this week and making sure that they feel welcome and valued within our system. So thank you for your support for our team. So tonight, I'm going to provide an update with Mary Beth here on the services from our school psychology team. And so our first slide here is who are school psychologists? And to sum this slide up, the first thing I think of is they are incredible collaborators to meet the needs of our students. And so here are lots of things that they do. They provide direct support. They provide evaluations for our students to re- They provide direct support. They provide evaluations for our students to receive services. They consult with teachers. Very important part of that is consulting with our families, other mental health professionals, to ensure that our students have the support strategies that they need to be successful. We work with administrators to improve school-wide practices to, to support students. And we collaborate with community providers to coordinate those needed supports for our students, because sometimes there are things outside of our school building that can support and help students as well. There are lots of things that we provide training in for our school psychologists, and there's a list of a few, but a big part that you'll hear Mary Beth talk about tonight is about that evaluation process and their role in that. But very importantly, mental health and behavioral interventions in supporting our students, crisis, crisis preparedness and response as well in those moments where our students need additional support during difficult times. We do have another celebration. Our LSSPs, formerly LSSPs, are now called school psychologists. On May 23rd, that was updated and a change in the Texas Administrative Code to call them a school psychologist, which provided clarity to our community and our families about the role and the work that they actually do. And so that was a huge celebration. And we are now, with the other 48 states, that call them school psychologists. So this is a big celebration in Texas. So there is, there are lots of requirements to become a school psychologist in Texas. And so we couldn't talk about school psychologists without talking about those requirements. It is graduate-level work, and a lot of people don't know that, that there is a specialist level. It's 60-plus graduate hours of study, or a doctoral degree with 90-plus graduate hours for our school psychologists. And there are also license renewal requirements and continuing education, much like our teachers have the continuing education requirement as well. But for a Texas license, that has to be renewed every two years, and that has at least 40 hours of continuing professional development with that license renewal. And if they are a nationally certified school psychologist, they have to maintain 75 hours of that professional development every three years. And there has to be at least 10 hours of the National Association of School Psychology approved, or American Psychological Association-approved provider. So lots of requirements, great training, and they are highly skilled and highly qualified to serve our students. I'm so excited to be able to brag on our team tonight, so thank you for having us. So school psychologists in Leander, these are a couple of faces of our team members at the middle school level on this slide. We work just as one part of a multidisciplinary evaluation team. We work very closely with educational diagnosticians, speech-language pathologists, other special education personnel, teachers, reading specialists, occupational therapists, to complete comprehensive evaluations for special education eligibility and determination of recommendations. All of that is done through a parent consent process. We also provide psychological services to students who qualify for those services based on evaluations, also only done through a parent-informed consent process and the IEP development, that Individualized Education Plan, for students that qualify for special education. We also work closely with our counselor colleagues and social work team members when there are needs for risk assessment or screenings at campuses for suicide risk screening, and also for threat assessment response, or if there is a crisis response that needs additional mental health and behavioral health-trained team members, we help our counselor colleagues support in those situations as well. This slide shows a little bit about the makeup of our team in Leander. We have 44 total school psychologists and school psychology interns. We are actually fully staffed this year, which is a huge celebration for us. That hasn't always been the case in recent years. We have 38 full-time team members, six part-time team members, and we have 36 that are providing comprehensive school psychological services. And by that, I mean they're providing evaluation support, as well as direct and consultative services as part of their role. The average number of years of experience in the field within our team is 11. We do have a large portion of our team, as you can see, within their first five years of experience, which is a similar trend that we're seeing in other districts as well. It's a celebration for us that we have a number of our team members that also have 20-plus years of experience. Within Leander, this is showing our years of service by our team. The average years of service within our team is six. We do, again, have quite a few team numbers, about 60% of our team that are within their first five years of service in Leander ISD, and we're happy to have them. Many people that have started internship with us, that have continued in fully licensed positions. As I mentioned earlier, we are a part of the comprehensive multidisciplinary team for evaluations, and this is a slide that shows that increase in our initial evaluations for special education consideration over the last 10 years. You can see a huge increase over, over that time period. There is a little dip in terms of the numbers of initial evaluations completed during the years that we had some school closures, and students attending more in virtual instruction during that pandemic time. Again, we're just one part of that team that works collaboratively with other professionals completing evaluations. So this total does include evaluations that are also completed solely by speech-language pathologists, as well as diagnosticians. To also give you a reference point, today, as of today, we have 656 pending initial evaluations as of today for this school year, which puts us actually above the total number that we completed 10 years ago for that full year.
And as you want to make note, that these are initial evaluations. This does not include the three-year reevaluations, or if an additional need arises at any time, a meeting can be called to do a reevaluation or request a reevaluation. Those are not included in this number here.
Right. Roughly one-third of all students in special education are evaluated every year as part of the reevaluation process, but that can fluctuate based on needs and changing needs over time. Within the evaluation process, just to give you a little bit of information about what that looks like and kind of the time spent, we did a time survey with our team about a year ago, asking them about time spent with daily tasks, and how much time they were spending as part of the evaluation process. The average, based on those responses, was putting, you know, the average process at around 10 hours or more per evaluation that was being completed. But there were many team members that said, depending on the scope of evaluation, we were looking at 15 hours or more per case. And that includes, of course, time talking with teachers as part of the ARD planning process, too. This gives you an idea of our kind of top activities, again, by survey of our team, in order from most time spent with assessment and report-writing responsibilities. We also provide a lot of extensive consultation support with families and staff members as part of the special education process. We are kind of behind-the-scenes special education paperwork people. We do a lot to help prepare individualized education plans, to help get those ready for ARD meetings, and help support our case manager teachers with ARD planning. And we also spend a lot of times sitting in ARD meetings, those admission review and dismissal meetings, where we're talking through IEP development and reviews. Parent conferences are a big part of our time, then, of course, direct services, both counseling services and consultation services for students that qualify based on their IEP plans. Here you have an average for number of students served through the IEP-related service provision from school psychologists. So this includes both direct counseling services, as well as consultative services. And a lot of our services are consultative as students get older, and we hope that we've taught skills and practiced skills, and so we're helping students generalize those skills across settings. And so that's why you do see those numbers increase with the age levels. This information was pulled in September of this year, based on our caseloads. And they do vary, of course, by campus, with some of our elementary campuses closer to about 40 students per school psychologist, and others less than 10, depending on the campus as well. So it does vary widely, but this shows you those averages. We are unique in Leander that we provide services within the IEPs for counseling as a related service. In other districts, sometimes there are other providers for counseling services on the IEP, but we, as school psychologists, provide those services exclusively in Leander. Here you can see what our National Association of School Psychologists recommended ratio is. That is one school psychologist to 500 students. You can also see that where we are in Texas, based on that ratio, is one school psychologist to over 2,500 students. In Leander, I'm very thankful to say we are far under that Texas ratio. Being closer to the 1 to 500 ratio would be able to allow for more comprehensive service delivery, proactive intervention system development, school-wide system work. But we are very thankful for the role that we do have and the opportunity to continue to grow our team over time. There are many ongoing recruitment and retention efforts for our school psychologists that we are intentional about. Our HR department works really closely to ensure that we are competitive with our pay in LISD for these staff members. But we also partner with two of my favorite universities, with UT Austin and Texas State, graduate training programs. We provide ongoing practicum internship experiences in Leander ISD. So they can come, they can be trained, essentially as a grow-your-own program, and then we can hire them on as full-time employees in Leander, which is incredible. To remain competitive as well, we did offer a flex date option for work off-campus for our school psychologists and our evaluation team. This does not mean that they get a day off. They are writing all of the reports for the evaluations that you heard Mary Beth talk about. So this is just one day for them to step away. They are often utilized all day long, and if they are on campus, they're being pulled away from the report writing. And as you know, there are many requirements for compliance, and so if they're not able to have that dedicated time to write the reports, it's a struggle to remain in compliance. And so we do have that flex date option, as well as there were some, in order for us to remain in compliance, that we're doing weekend or holiday report writing. And so we did compensate them for that time. And Mary Beth worked closely with them to also ensure that we were providing a balance, to make sure they were having time for their families and themselves as well, and not spending all of their extra time writing their reports. We also are doing an ongoing workload analysis for assigned evaluation help by the internal team members, making sure that we're sharing. If somebody isn't able to get to an evaluation or needs support with report writing, they're incredible about helping each other and supporting each other. And we can also get some contract personnel outside of the district, and Mary Beth works with the team to make sure that they have the support that they need to be able to remain in compliance. Our priority is student services, but we also have to have a priority of the evaluations and the report writing. And then the last thing that we will highlight is we are proud that LISD Special Programs Department became an NASP-approved provider for that professional development, which means that we can provide our own in-house professional development for our school psychologists with the hours, it was 40 and 75 required hours. So we can provide that in-house, tailored to the needs of our students and the data that we're seeing in our district. And so that's a celebration to be able to do that in Leander ISD. And at this time, we will pass it back to you and open it up for questions and discussion.
I have questions. Trustees, I, if y'all looked into your email, I sent about 20 questions that I sent to this team, so I won't ask them all, I'll just ask a couple. My first question is, so I'm a parent in the district. My child's just been diagnosed with dyslexia, autism, just a range of diagnoses. As a parent, I'm in despair. I'm trying to figure out what is, what can I do to help my child? How does this child reach out to our school to start that initial evaluation? Because this is parent consent, but if I'm, you've got to remember, I'm getting, my world's been turned upside down. How am I going to connect with our school district to get that evaluation piece started? Is it a letter? Is it a form online? Do I go to my teacher? What does that process look like for our parents when they're just trying to figure out that first step?
That's a great question. Thank you for asking that. If at any time, a parent, or a teacher, or someone suspects that a student is struggling or has a disability, we would go through the child find process. We went through, while the procedural safeguards are there, those are well-written for, I believe, attorneys and everybody else. It's a little difficult to read. And so we created a handbook on our LISD website that is step-by-step through all of the processes for, ooh, I think my child has a disability. What do I do? Who do I reach out to? It's a campus administrator, your child's teacher, you can reach out to our office. Let somebody know on your campus. Reach out to us. We will make sure that you are connected with the right person. There is a template. We want to make this process very easy. There is a template that you can write your child's name in and sign it on our website, and you send that in, and we are happy to start this process. And so lots of resources on our special programs website. Look at the handbook. It's step-by-step through the entire process with helpful resources, and you can always reach out to us.
I love that there's a template, because that is usually a barrier for most of our students in Texas, because they, parents just don't know how to ask. So I love that you guys are putting that up front, because I know there's been times, not in this district, where I have asked for an evaluation, and if I didn't write the right word, I was denied that. So I appreciate that so much, making that process so much easier for our parents. My other question, and well, I also have a comment, is I just want our public to know, our school psychologists are spending 10-plus hours on an evaluation, that we, as a district, are not getting reimbursed for that, because it is not part of the special education reimbursement model. So just throwing that out there. And my last thing is, you know, right now with everything going, we saw the way our state has redefined dyslexia. What kind of training are our school psychologists, I keep wanting to call them the wrong word, are getting for dysgraphia and for dyslexia? Because I know this is fairly new, and I know there's a lot of parents right now who are trying to also navigate that. So what are we doing to help prepare our school psychologists to be able to identify those students, to get the services they need, so we can eventually get them to where they need to be and possibly graduate out of special education?
Absolutely. So a couple of years ago, when the state started to make some changes around dyslexia, we started to make adjustments in Leander as well. We moved to a support model with evaluations that did include dyslexia specialists as part of that evaluation team before there were state-specific requirements to do that. We also started to provide training to our evaluation staff, more, more training to our evaluation staff of diagnosticians and school psychologists around dyslexia and dysgraphia and related disorders to help prepare them for being even more expert in that area. That's been in collaboration with our dyslexia services team over time and our special programs providers. We have had training brought in from Region 13. Last year, our education, our local education service center, specifically around dyslexia and looking at specific learning disability within that dyslexia framework. We have also had other expert trainers come in to provide training with the full team, including our dyslexia specialists in that area. And we are continuing to provide information from TEA as it becomes available to help support that comprehensive evaluation. We consult with occupational therapists as needed for dysgraphia evaluations as well, to bring them in for that component of the evaluation when needed.
Thank you.
All right. And so you did mention that you're fully staffed, but you also have over 600 initial evaluations, and you use the contract services. So if someone goes in there today, or tomorrow, and puts in a request for an evaluation, how much time could they expect before the evaluation's actually done?
So for initial evaluations, there is a mandated 45 school days for the timeline for that evaluation at the state level, and we work to 100% compliance of that requirement. The 656 pending evaluations does include evaluations The six hundred and fifty-six pending evaluations does include evaluations done by speech-language pathologists as well as diagnosticians. So it's not solely the school psychologist that's working through that number, but it is collaboration across those providers. We are, again, working towards compliance with all of those timelines that are set. So a forty-five school day timeline is, is what it could take for that full evaluation report to be completed before having recommendations.
So that's over two months.
Yes, it is a long time.
All right, thank you.
We also have started summer evaluations. Typically, when school is closed, those days do not count towards the evaluation timeline. Our goal is to get students the services that they need. And so starting two or three summers ago, we started with the PPE when schools were closed and it was important for us to continue those evaluations. We still do that now to continue that evaluation process so that kids can start the year with services.
So when we say evaluation, there's a lot of pieces in there. There's not just paperwork, there's parent interaction, there's student interaction. I really would love to be able to understand if y'all had to chart out your time spent to make sure, because I have a hunch that a lot of your time, although y'all would love to be working more with parents, students, and teachers, it's probably a lot of paperwork. And so I would just like to be able to confirm that so that I can start asking the next round of questions, which is, how can we help with that? Because I think the most important thing is to be able to use all of your expertise and your wisdom and your training with our parents, teachers, and students. And I just feel like that might be impeded a bit. But I'm not really sure what the answers are. I, I know y'all have been working on this, but I think it would help if we had a better understanding of what does it look like for our department so we can start asking questions, especially to our lawmakers.
So the evaluation report that we complete with other evaluation personnel is really meant to be a comprehensive document that is like the building block for special education planning for a student. It covers required areas, of course. We're looking at functional developmental and academic levels for the student. We're also looking at strengths of the student and, and needs. So that's a foundation of what we're doing in special education is that initial evaluation. So it is, it does take time and we want it to be comprehensive and really reflect the student. But with that said, it, it, it takes time and there is a lot of time that goes to assessment and report writing, kind of paperwork pieces, as you mentioned, that if we did have additional team members, we could spend more time potentially with, with services. We have a split in being able to provide evaluations and services in Leander, and I'm proud of that. Other, other districts do not have that ability to do that with their school psychology team being what it, what it is, much smaller than ours. But there is always the desire to spend more time working with students and supporting students through those interventions, absolutely.
I have one question. As far as the data collection with the psychologists, it's only for the people that come to you? You don't collect data from any student that didn't come to you or someone referred them to you or something like that?
Correct, for students that are in the evaluation process or that we have informed consent for.
Any other questions? Thank y'all, thank you for all that information. Thank you for everything you and your team does for our students and our school district. We really appreciate y'all, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We're going to move over to the next agenda item. That's Agenda Item 7A4, the 2024-25 Academic Calendar Discussion.
Hello again, everyone. Okay, this shouldn't take that much time. We're just, I'm here to announce that we are opening up and beginning that process that we do every year relative to the academic calendar development for the 24-25 school year. So that's what I'm here, I'm gonna just outline the process for you. And then I'm going to invite you to provide some input. More importantly, y'all have my email. And you'll also have access to the survey links as community members and parents to, to provide feedback in that way as well. So a few years back, we really did a lot of work, kind of a meta-study of calendars of districts all over Texas and the nation. We worked, gathered a ton of input, and we really did an overhaul of our calendar. Since then, it has really been about a continuous improvement process every year to make tweaks and improvements. Much similar to the process, for instance, that Jimmy Disler uses in facilities with the elementary school, you know, floor plan. Every time he builds a school, he gets people together, talks about it, and makes improvements. And that's where we are at with our calendar each year. On top of the fact that, at the request of the community and trustees, we bring two years of calendar to the table at the beginning of the year each time. One for approval and one as a tentative draft to kind of get people started with knowing what's going to happen. And also, just so it jumpstarts the discussion each fall. This is the timeline. You notice I had, it used to be on one line, but we're, we have more feedback together from more stakeholders. So now it's on two lines. We're starting with face-to-face principal discussions this Tuesday. Also Tuesday afternoon, I got a spot on the agenda with the Superintendent Student Advisory Group. They do set their own agendas, so I'm very thankful that I got on that and will be going to them for feedback. Then it's a whirlwind tour to DEWIC from there on Thursday, the sixteenth. And then we have in-person and online listening sessions in, in the buildup to sending out that survey to our community. Starting a little bit earlier this year, November twenty-seventh, and it's open for over five weeks. So we can get everybody's feedback. In December also, now that I'm in charge of Shack, I'm bringing it to Shack too because there are health components to consider relative to an academic calendar. So we'll be getting feedback from the Shack team, which we do have a student on as well. And then we'll be bringing a recommendation for you to consider in January in advance of a request for approval February first. And you can see from the timeline that we're gathering input from all of our stakeholders. I'd be going even faster if this clicker would click. Just a reminder of the statutory guidelines that give, form kind of our, our guardrails for the process. I did add the last bullet this year because we had a lot of conversations around it over the last two years about where did the, you know, the bad weather days versus the incorporation of additional minutes into the calendar, which was a legislative revision for that. I did put the current calendar in here for you to look at. And I've kind of highlighted the, the attributes that there's been so much research over the last four years, three and a half, four years, and tweaks that really each, this is a tight calendar. Each day, you know, PD day, holiday, start date, end date, half-day, early release. Those are all like really placed with precision. And, and based on, you know, tweaks we get, we do based on feedback each year. So you can read those, I don't need to go over them with you. One thing I will say for this next year in the spring, UT, we've been, I've had meetings with the person in charge of the calendar at UT. And again, they are looking to move their spring break up a week to align with South Butte. Now, we, I am waiting for them to convince ACC. Because our feedback from our community and our staff and our students over the years has been that, yeah, UT's great, but our students are earning, you know, over, you know, tons of credits at ACC. And we have to align with ACC both during the year and as far as our start date in the summer because we have students taking summer courses there as well. So that does trump UT. But UT sometimes convinces ACC. So we're gonna be watch, I'm, I've been in contact with them constantly over the last few weeks, hoping I would have a response even by today's presentation. Just a review of the state requirement for minutes. And our, the current calendar and the proposed calendar exceed those minutes and provide those additional bad weather minutes required as well. Sorry about the formatting on this slide. But the first day is a Wednesday this year. It'll be a Wednesday next year as well, tentatively, we'll show it to you in a minute. You're familiar with this calendar. These are the professional learning days and the teacher work days. I remember a couple of years back when y'all were pretty adamant about giving teachers some work time, some, and you wanted it to be dedicated. And you wanted to know that that was going to happen. So we, we continue to put those two workdays at the beginning of the year. And then we, one of the fixes, or I would say improvements from this past year for this calendar this year was moving the Continuous Improvement Conference from October to November because we had that kind of, that the election day was, you know, is a Tuesday in November. And it was like a hanging Chad in the middle of the week of, you know, that, that weird day. My own neighbors are like, hey, why do we get off on a random Tuesday? And so told them it was the election, but we've, we've worked to remedy that. And, you know, then we had a lot of conversations about Chris, about the winter break as well. This calendar really places all of those days precisely. One of my proudest pieces was when y'all approved to build that full day for parent-teacher conferences at the elementary. That also lines up nicely with the end of the grading period, the end of the six-week grading period for secondary. So they get some time to work on grades and early on in the fall, make communications, have time to make communications with parents of students who are struggling. So I'm not gonna go over this whole thing again, it's basically similar stuff for this coming year. But you've seen this last year, last January, this is the tentative 24-25 calendar. I say tentative, it was a draft presented last year. We have not gone to gather all that feedback yet, that we, we will be doing that in the next month and a half. And we'll see what tweaks and improvement needs potentially come out of those conversations. Right now, it includes the same attributes that we've been tweaking and, and getting feedback on over the last three years. It maintains the consistency with the operational minutes. And the, the Wednesday start date, not in the first or second week of, you know, it actually does come in that mid-August point, but still ending with Memorial Day. Remember, it took a few years to get that, get it that tight. And not a spare day or minute to be had if we want to end before Memorial Day. Again, I already just talked to you about the PD days and the teacher work days and the parent-teacher conference. They're placed according to the same parameters that were established through feedback in previous years. Might get some movement that I'll bring to you. Maybe you have some ideas for some movement as well, look forward to that feedback. And that's where we are at, continuous improvement to tweak and, and ensure that we have the calendar that meets the needs of our community and best, most importantly, meets the, the learning needs of our students.
Matt, I'd like to say, to keep you under, you're doing half about the time that you were allotted for the presentation. So to keep you in that twelve minutes, I don't have a question. I'm just gonna have a statement and say that I have asked you questions before time and you have answered them fully above and beyond. I asked you about PD, how's that going? Did you look at other calendars? You looked at other calendars and you looked at all the different ways it could be done. So for some teachers in secondary, it's before grading cycle. But for other, or other teachers in elementary school, it's after, right? I mean, you, you took so many different components and intentionality to try to meet the needs of our teachers, parents, and students. And I know there's no calendar that's gonna be one-hundred percent perfect. But I'd like to thank you and your department for the massive amount of work, intentional work that you've done to try to make this just a wonderful calendar to really focus on the student learning and all those other components and for getting all the input you're getting.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just wanted to, you mentioned that you had worked with UT and then ACC. Did you also look at the, I know it's still early in the process, but are you working with Round Rock ISD as well and AISD just because those also sometimes affect families in our area?
Yeah, we, I have in my bag back there, I'm a copy of all their calendars. And I do talk to people over in those areas as well. There is at least one district, I'm not gonna name it, but waits for us to put ours out. And, and, and theirs looks remarkably similar. But, you know, we do get feedback from some of our staff where there are families that one teacher works in Leander, one teacher works in Round Rock. And that does, sometimes it works out, sometimes it doesn't perfectly. My wife works at UT, so ideally for my family, we'd be aligned with UT. But I can't, I can't do that, I gotta, sometimes it works out, it has so far. But if UT veers away from ACC, we'll stick with ACC. You know, it, we're trying to make the, the best calendar that'll meet the needs, needs of the most people in our system, to be sure.
I just had a comment, thank you for keeping the dedicated day for parent conferences. I love that day as an elementary parent because I see so many parents on campus. But I love like the interaction between our teachers and parents. And it just gives parents another opportunity to see what their kids are doing. And I don't have to, you know, worry about everything else going on and it's very, just very easy. So I appreciate that.
Embarrassing personal note, it is so easy, but my wife and I missed out on scheduling our kid's conference this year on the right date.
No comment.
I know. Had to do it, had, the teacher had to make special time for us, so thank you, big shout-out to Ms. Campos.
All right, nothing else? No other questions? All right, we're going to move to the next agenda item. And we are actually moving 7B1 to a later date, and we're moving over to 7B2.
Thank you, Madam President. Board members, this has been in your Friday memo and you have all the details in here. I'm happy to answer questions in our regular weekly phone calls with you if you have. Otherwise, we request that you put this in consent for next agenda.
Consent is fine with me.
Worked for me, thank you, Dr. Gary. All right, now we're going to move over to Item 7C3, Consider One-Time Lump Sum Payment.
Hello, hello again. Members of the board, tonight, if you recall, about one year ago at this time, we came before you to do a one-time payment in December of '22. And at that time, if I remember correctly, I did not listen to the meeting, but I do remember saying this. That we would, we would come back in the spring if, you know, if, if we had monies available. We did not come back in the spring, but we did add a net of about $10.7 million to the fund balance. And that was an earlier item tonight with the financial audit. So we are beyond just the estimate from the Financial Services Department, that is actually the audited figure. And so what we would like to recommend to the board tonight is because it's kind of a, basically, since we did add so much money to the fund balance, a lot of that money was because of vacant positions. And hence, that resulted in our staff working a little bit extra and helping one another out and carrying that, 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 that burden, if you will. And then with all the, the issues we have right now, we're still waiting for the legislature to maybe, or, or maybe not do something, we don't know. So what we wanted to do is take a, a big portion of that, about five and a half million of that $10.7 we added, and be able to give our employees a one-time of that 10.7 we added, and be able to give our employees a one-time payment in the amount of a, very similar to last year, amount of $1,000 for full-time positions and $500 for part-time positions. The criteria would be very similar to, to, to prior years. That it would be, that would be a one-time payment. It would be paid to all employees on December 22nd, the last pay before we break, for the winter break. It would be, like I said before, $1,000 and then $500 for a part-time. Oh, and it does include, sorry, it does include crossing guards and teacher fellows. However, the teacher fellows, just FYI, they're really not considered employees, so they will be paid through accounts payable as, as a payment and be 1099'd as, as appropriate. And basically, the, the, this is like three criteria. If you're an employee in our district on November 17th, 2023, that's next, the week from tomorrow, you would be eligible and as long as you haven't been terminated or proposed for termination or been non-renewed or proposed for non-renewal. Other than that, we kind of made a few changes from last year. Last year, we were making these payments for about four months, so we'd like to do this at one time. And so we've clarified that a little bit, but we are, you know, we, as stated earlier by our auditor, we have a very healthy fund balance. And so adding those monies to it, we want to be able to take that opportunity to give back to our employees to show our appreciation for the hard work and all the great jobs they do to do everything for our students.
I just had a question slash comment based on the experience from last year. So when you say proposed for termination and proposed for non-renewal, does that include people who have put in their, that they're going to leave their, their actual exit letters that they're leaving?
Resignation?
Yes.
No, ma'am. It's, is employed as of November 17th.
Okay, thanks.
We had some caveats in there last year and that really created some issues and we were paying people for, like I said, four months, trying to figure all that part out, so.
I moved that the Board of Trustees approve the superintendent's recommendation to adopt the resolution amending the LISD 2023-2024 Compensation Plan and approve a one-time lump sum payment to all eligible employees on December 22, 2023, as outlined in the resolution and amended in the LISD 2023-2024 Compensation Plan.
I second.
Have a motion from Anna, a second from Christine. Any further discussion?
Thank you for including crossing guards.
All those in favor?
Continuous improvement.
All those in favor? Seven ayes, the motion passes.
Thank you.
It is, it is 10:04 and the board will now go into closed session for the purposes permitted by Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation or attorney-client privilege matter. Yeah, it's much easier to read in this version, thank you, Anna. 551.074 deliberation regarding resignations, terminations, employment, reassignments, duties, evaluation and personnel, public officers. Government Code 551.0821 deliberation regarding matters whereby personally identifiable information regarding one or more students will be disclosed. Texas Government Code 551.074 deliberation and consideration of employment of area superintendent. Texas Government Code 551.074 deliberation and consideration of employment of Danielson Middle School principal. Texas Government Code 551 deliberation and consideration of employment of Stiles Middle School principal.[862.32]
I move that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendations of Jamie Spekzarth for principal at Stiles Middle School, one-year probationary employment contract for personnel additions as presented in accordance with the salary scale policies and contract of Leander Independent School District for the 2023-2024 school year.
Second. Anna makes motion, Trish seconds. Any additional discussion? All those in favor? Seven, four, motion passes. Any other motions?
I move that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of Paul Johnson for area superintendent, one-year probationary employment contract for personnel additions as presented in accordance with the salary scale policies and contract of Leander Independent School District for the 23-24 school year.
Second. Christine makes motion, Gloria seconds. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Yay, motion passes. Sorry, that's really exciting. All right, there's nothing else. And so it is 10:23 PM and having no further business, this meeting of the Leander ISD Board of Trustees is adjourned.